All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the
or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability.
Exactly, 10 o'clock a.m., February 15, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Vice Chairman Bob Ellis. Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Natalie Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Khadija Abdul-Rahman. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
All right, please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are grateful for this day, for your blessings upon our lives. We pray now your continued strength upon our commissioners. Give them your guidance, your patience, and your wisdom. It is in your name that we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance. All right, Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. Twenty-three dash zero one zero one, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the County Commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any Consent Agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the recess meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one item on page four to be removed.
For separate discussion or removed?
It will be removed and brought back at the March first meeting.
All right, which one?
First item, twenty-three zero one zero five, Commission on Disability Affairs. Commissioner Abdul-Rahman will bring that appointment back at the next meeting.
Okay. Any others?
That's all I have.
All right, on page five, number twenty-three dash zero one zero seven, like that held off for further discussion. Anything else, Commissioners? Of note, our entertaining motion to approve as amended. Motion to approve by Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays. On page thirteen, recess meeting agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have an item requested by Commissioner Barrett to be added to today's recess meeting agenda. Twenty-three dash zero one four one, request approval of resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners standing against anti-Semitism of supporting legislation and clearly defines the meeting of anti-Semitism under state law and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Barrett.
All right, what's the emergency, Commissioner?
This is an item that is being discussed in the State House right now. It will, they're trying to move it to the floor for a vote at the State House and then get it ready for Crossover Day, all which are very time sensitive, and I felt like it was important for us to support that prior to that movement and to help move it along.
So, let me make sure I understand the emergencies.
If we waited two more weeks to do it, it may not move along in the House the way it should.
So, when you say that may not?
Well, it may not get to the floor, or if it gets to the floor, it may not get to the floor in time for Crossover Day, and it's important. So, you know, I think our encouragement, as certainly the largest county in the state, is important, and I want to make sure it happens in a timely manner so that it can be considered by the folks in the General Assembly.
I mean, it's an important subject matter, but on the question of whether or not it's an emergency, I mean. And this legislation was put in place for us not to, not to, because before, we would just load up on the day of the meeting with actions that were not on the agenda, we hadn't had a chance to review. So, I would hope that we would really utilize this for a true, true emergency. We actually have time on this one, but...
Yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I beg to differ, but I hear what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Brief remark. I mean, I know we do have an item on our agenda, which this does sort of fit with anyway, with our external affairs updates, where we do typically take, you know, we do bring sometimes to the floor on that day of positions on certain things, and I think this has a little more strength to it, since it's codified in a form of resolution, but, you know, I do think it fits with the agenda item that we have here, and it'd be appropriate to kind of, you know, for us to be able to kind of speak in one, with one voice on this particular topic and convey our thing. So, while it may not be sort of technically in a way that we designed this as an emergency, you know, I think it fits with something that was on our agenda for discussion, and Commissioner Barrett has the language here for us to specifically vote on it, and we'd probably take an action on it if we didn't do this in our legislative package anyway. So, we're going to have, likely have a discussion on it, one way or the other. So, I would move that we move forward with approval of the item to add to the agenda, and hear it at the same, at the time we hear the legislative update.
All right, motion to approve, to add this as an emergency item by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Thorn. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
But I'll remind us, we need to, true emergencies. Okay, continue, Madam Clerk.
Next item, this item was held on the first meeting in February.
Where are you, Madam Clerk?
I'm on adding an item that was omitted from the recess meeting agenda. Twenty-three dash zero zero eight eight, it was held at the last meeting, but it was not, it didn't appear on the printed agenda for today's meeting. It's Registration and Elections, Request Approval of a Statewide Contract to Provide Temporary Staffing Services.
So, you're adding that?
It needs to be put on this agenda, yes, sir.
All right. Anything else?
And we have two items for revision. On page fifteen, twenty-three dash zero zero eight six, Sheriff. The requested item has been amended. Approval of a resolution authorizing the sheriff to offer above the minimum salaries, authorizing a five percent base rate increase for certain employees of the Fulton County Sheriff, directing an amendment to the overtime and compensatory time personnel policy, and authorizing increased overtime pay and for other purposes. Next item on page sixteen, it's been revised to amend the requested action. Twenty-three dash zero zero five zero, Juvenile Court. Request approval of a statewide website system development services in the amount not to exceed $115,000.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right, on the agenda, as amended. All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays. Twenty-three dash zero one two three, Ratification of Minutes, Recession Meeting Minutes, January 18th, Regular Meeting Post Agenda Minutes, February 1, 2023.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorn, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, four yeas, zero nays. Twenty-three dash zero one two four, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. We do not have any proclamations for presentation today.
Praise the Lord. Continue.
On page fourteen, Public Hearings. Twenty-three dash zero one two five, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conferencing or by submitting their comments in writing by registering on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Priority for public comment will giving, will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. Public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes. In the event the 30-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended, and the business portion of the BLC meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we'll start with the speakers here in Assembly Hall. We have received 20 speaker cards.
Twenty.
Twenty. Will the first five speakers please come down? Brian Dunn, Forrest Webb, Anita Lane, Lucia Frazier, and Jason Frazier.
All right, and speakers, as always, when you have 15 seconds left, I'll say, simply say 15 seconds, and that'll be your clue to conclude your remarks.
Good morning. My name is Brian Dunn. I live in Fulton County.
Speak up, sir.
How's this, better?
Much better.
My name is Brian Dunn. I live in Fulton County. The position that pays $185,000 a year, you were looking to fill for Fulton County Elections Director is an important position. From my understanding, this person would oversee most, if not all, of the election processes and procedures to ensure our elections run smoothly, that our laws are followed, and all legal votes are protected and counted. So, how is Ms. Williams still being considered after so many issues being identified, including poll workers being overworked with over 12-hour days for 19 days straight, also paying out a lot of costly overtime, long two- to three-hour election lines even during the runoff, thousands of voter challenges not being addressed, many voters were not made aware that they were redistricted to find out after waiting along lines? Many probably just went home after that and did not even vote. Lack of security at some voting locations, and the list can go on. Even with all the public comments of issues, some that are very serious, you publicly claim that the elections ran smoothly. Just because you state that the elections went well, that does not mean it's true. After speaking with many voters around different parts of Fulton County, discussing how the vote went and what was exposed in '20 and '22, I was not surprised how many felt like I did. Knowing and seeing obvious evidence being brought forth of laws being violated, feeling disenfranchised and ripped off is not a good place for the Fulton voters. However, not all voters are aware of the issues, but they should be. Some people that do know the issues do not even vote because they don't think their votes are even going to count. We need someone in this position that will restore confidence, work out for the voters, and protect the vote. If Fulton County is truly honest with our tax money, who are running our elections, and we're transparent, the correct person would be put into place, not breaking laws and regulations. Please vote no to Nadine Williams.
Chairman Pitts and members of the County Commission. My name is Forrest Webb, the third City of Atlanta Municipal Clerk. I rise today after 34 years of never addressing this governing authority in support of the nomination of Ms. Nadine Williams as the Office of Registration and Elections Director. I would like to also say publicly, thank you Chairman Pitts, thank you for the County Commission current, as well as the past County Commission, the County Manager, the County City, the County Attorney, as well as the External Affairs Director, for empowering and supporting this Office of Registration and Elections when it came to successful elections. I'll also say there are no perfect elections, but the goal is to achieve a successful election. And I feel under the leadership of Nadine Williams during the pandemic and the appointment that she received as the interim director, and prior to that, as the Elections Chief, she has accepted the role of public service, and I strongly support her nomination by the Board of Registration and Elections to this County Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good morning. It's an honor to stand before you, and I thank you for your public service, and God bless you. I'm here to speak on the Election Board Director position also. And I work in Pittsburgh. I've been there for 30 years, helping the homeless, and I live in Midtown, and so there's so much chatter from every type of population on this particular position. If this position was to be filled and the topic was a Holocaust museum, you would be incredibly sensitive about the person that you would put in that position. If this position was for commercial sexually exploited children, likewise, you'd be incredibly sensitive as to who you would appoint for this position. All public servants like myself are dedicated, and I do not deny the dedication of Ms. Williams. I just think with the great divide in our country, with the slander on our amazing state, we need to appoint somebody who's bipartisan. It's not about color or gender, it's about what's right for Georgia, so that Georgia can stand with integrity for elections. Thank you so much.
Good morning. Lucia Frazier, Fulton County resident. The Fulton County Election Director is accountable to every single one of us Fulton residents. It's a possession of integrity where you constantly seek ways to ensure the delivery of one resident, one vote, and the delivery of an accurate tally of votes, the minimum, with the minimum amount of our tax dollars. It really takes engineering degree-level technical knowledge and influential leadership to pull the necessary work out of the departments. This could be the greatest success story in the country for election integrity if we get the right person. There has not been one resident, one vote, as the SOS voter files have shown. There has not been assurance of accurate vote tallies because the tally operation is completely hidden. These can easily be addressed with smart process changes, and the spending has been excessive because the processes are excessive, but they can easily become lean with the proper analysis. If we're going to ask 185K for this position, then we can definitely get someone with relevant technical experience. I've worked with plant managers, who they get paid less, and are responsible for hundreds of processes with tedious steps to deliver parts accurate to .001 of an inch. With proper outreach, we can get the right person. Many previously uninvolved Fulton residents have stepped up to help work our elections so that we can learn and help identify weaknesses in the processes. We didn't start coming here over a year ago with empty complaints. We came here month after month with solutions to make our elections more secure and cheaper. As poll workers, many of us performed so well, the poll managers requested us over and over again. So, you've seen our integrity, our passion, our determination to make Fulton County look good and to benefit every Fulton resident. So, why would you doubt our intentions now? Thank you very much.
Jason Frazier from Roswell. I sent you all an email yesterday, and I hope you've received that, but I wanted to speak, speak on the record for everyone to hear. I found a copy of the Elections Director job description, and it states in there, and I quote, "The DRE ensures accurate collection and maintenance of voter registration data." I think we can all agree, that's not happening. Also, OGA 21 dash 2 dash 228A states in a number of words that each county or municipality shall have the right and the duty to maintain their own voter rolls. HAVA 52 USC 21083 stipulates in a number of words that you need to be maintaining your voter rolls, which again, is not happening. It even calls out specifically that duplicate names are to be eliminated from this computerized list. Well, that wasn't happening, but now some of them are, because I've turned in 20,000 of these, okay? So, HAVA precedence has already been set with a case in Minnesota where Public Interest Legal Foundation found 73 duplicates, and they won their complaint. Again, I've turned in 20,000 in Fulton. That's a little bigger than 73 for those that aren't real good at math. But at any rate, after that, that case was won, the results were forcing of the hand of this county in Minnesota to, and I quote, "Take additional steps to locate and remove duplicate registrations." Why can't we do that without me forcing the hand of a HAVA complaint? It is the law. We need to be doing this, and it's not happening. It's very disappointing for me to spend all of these hours to do this work for you guys for an election director that's dropping the ball. So, at any rate, it's pretty clear that the Director of Elections position is required to be doing this. It is state law. It is federal law.
15 seconds.
So, at any rate, Fulton County is in violation of HAVA, OCGA, and the DRE's own job description and mismanagement of Nadine Williams. I hope you will do better. Thank you.
Next five speakers, please come down. Candy Muldowney, Melissa Ferrero, Sarah Pedro, Kevin Muldowney, and Julie Adams, excuse
Good morning. I, my name is Candy Muldowney from Milton, District Two. I'm here today to state my opposition to the permanent hiring of Nadine Williams as the Fulton County Elections Director. Honestly, I am disappointed as a citizen that I feel I need to say that. I have listened to other public comments at these meetings citing the laws that have been broken, which include not having a real process to validate new voter registrations or clean existing rolls. The best one of all is when I received the notice of a security incident in a letter sent by Ms. Williams. It stated that my poll worker information was sent to outside sources and several media outlets by an employee responsible to Ms. Williams. How many poll workers were affected by this breach? And how much added cost does the county have to pay to offer 24 months of credit and identity monitoring? This further shows me that employees, whether permanent or temporary, are not thoroughly screened and trained, not to mention all of the issues brought up by the financial audit released in 2021 that have not been addressed. Why hasn't a suitable candidate been found in the last two years? Some of you must feel that it is wrong to reward this important position to someone that has so many complaints against them. How could the taxpayers feel good about their representatives considering and possibly voting for someone that does not seem to protect one of our most valuable rights, the right to vote? Every legal citizen's vote should be protected and counted. We deserve a candidate that will follow the law, protect our vote, and have transparency. Please continue your search.
Good morning. My name is Melissa Ferrero, and I live in Fulton County, Milton, Georgia. It is my understanding that you're here to, today, to vote on to whether to make Nadine Williams your official Elections Director for Fulton County. You've had many public comments against hiring and a lot of supporting examples and issues. You've also had some public comments supporting her. Those that support her, I would ask why? What are their reasons for supporting her? What examples do they have? I know one said last week longevity. Longevity should be rewarded, they said. But longevity does not give you the skill set that's needed to run the elections of a county that's one of the largest counties in the state. Do the supporters think that it's not important to follow the law? Do the supporters think that it's okay not to upkeep the voter rolls, verify new voter registrations, or address voter roll challenges? Do supporters think that it's okay to agree to spend taxpayer money for elections without supporting invoices with detail, documents, or agreements? There are just too many examples to mention here with so little time. It is concerning that such serious issues seem to be okay with some of you. Is Nadine Williams your only candidate? If she is, does that mean you have to vote for her? Don't your constituents deserve better? Most employers would keep looking for, to find a candidate with all the skill sets needed. Shouldn't you? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman Pitts. My name is Sarah Pedro. I'm a Fulton County resident. It's time to change election leadership in Fulton County. Being a leader means having the courage and humility to accept that things might not be working and to make the hard choices to remove people not doing their jobs. As a poll watcher, I followed much of what was happening, not only at my precinct, but many others as well. It was definitely a tale of two counties here in Fulton, the South and the North. This included disparity in level of poller, poll worker civility, wait times, voter processing times, and count tallies. Many issues stemming from election law violations were raised during the primaries, runoff, and general elections in 2022 across the county, but especially in North Fulton. Just about every day during early voting, I would hear of more instances of machine issues, violations of policy, poll watcher intimidation, and voter suppression. Good, clean voting procedures should never be so arduous and riddled with irregularities. And why has Fulton been at the center of so much controversy? I believe it is related to cronyism versus the focus on hiring qualified, nonpartisan professionals, especially in leadership positions. We need a leader who can restore dignity, respect, and trust to this county and change course. I oppose the permanent placement of Nadine Williams as Elections Director. She's not lived up to the job expectations. Let's try this again with a new, fresh perspective and focus on strong job qualifications. The last thing we need is one county of 159 dragging this great state down, and it starts with strong righteous leadership. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Muldowney, Fulton County resident. You guys know I'm usually a friendly, optimistic guy. Believe it or not, I don't usually complain a lot, but the fact that you're still trying to get Nadine Williams across the finish line has really got my goat. The problem with Nadine, Richard Barron 2.0, have been pointed out multiple times. Lack of leadership, lack of clear vision for ethical and efficient Elections Department, and not abiding by Georgia elections laws have been highlighted on numerous occasions. I'm thinking it may have something to do, to do with you, Chairman Pitts. You proudly declared a while back that your Elections Department delivered Joe Biden, Raphael Warnock, and John Ossoff in 2020, and you'll do it again in 2024. Is this why you want Ms. Williams as your Elections Director? So she can carry your water and do as your party wants? That's not supposed to be how it works. The Elections Department should be responsible for the voting public, not a political party. The Elections Department should be nonpartisan and completely transparent. Fulton deserves a Director of Elections that will tally the votes efficiently, accurately, and let the voters deliver their actual election winners. I urge you to continue the interview process and hire the qualified Elections Director that Fulton deserves. Thank you.
Next five speakers, Lori Dindmore, Mariah Gordill, Matt Rosenzack, Lauren Waits, and Art Gamble.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Julie Allen, and again, thank you, Commissioner Barrett, for being my voice from Midtown and serving, and thank you too for following legislation and advocating for the needs for addressing anti-Semitism. Hatred of any form in our community is unacceptable. Thank you for your voice. I have come before you multiple times, today, February 1st, January 18th, December 13th. I thank you for ears to hear my concerns. Each time I spoke about the extremist management, including voter suppression experienced by myself here in Midtown, searching for a place to vote early, as well as what I saw in North Fulton, what they were experiencing in the runoff, as I looked for a place to vote with wait times of 120 to 80 minutes, kind of all around in a lot of places. Nadine Williams failed the test as interim Elections Director and must not be hired. The vote for Nadine Williams as Election Director has been deferred multiple times. Why? When did Fulton County Elections Director become a partisan position? The Democratic Party posted this call to action February 10th, stating email messages are needed to make sure that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners hires Nadine Williams as Election Director right away. Why is the Fulton County Board of Commissioner so partisan when it comes to elections that you delay a vote by more than two months so that you can call in the Calvary, intentionally wasting the time of concerned citizens like myself, who take time off work to come before you with documented concerns? you with documented concerns? Many Fulton County residents are asking why the County Commission would continue to consider hiring an Election Director with a lengthy track record of issues, including failing to follow Georgia law with regard to election operations. You all have been provided with evidence of confirmed problems with elections under Ms. Williams. Multiple, multiple duplicate voter registrations that have not been addressed. All public record. Please review that evidence and vote no on Ms. Williams. Fulton County deserves better than Nadine Williams, who is a clear partisan choice of the Democratic Party. Our elections must be fair and free of partisan domination. I urge you to continue the search for a qualified candidate who can manage the logistics of our county. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Laurie Demarest. I'm a Fulton County resident, and I'm here to speak in support of the selection of Nadine Williams as Elections Director. I just wanted to note that notwithstanding the number of opposing voices you've heard this morning, there's, I think, about 10 of us in the audience here to speak in support of her, and I'm not sure how many you'll be able to hear before your break, so I just wanted you to be aware of that. I was, I had the opportunity to observe the results of Ms. Williams' leadership during the last election in a couple of different ways. One, as a voter, but also as a poll watcher for the Democratic Party of Georgia. And I was able to watch a couple of different precincts, and everywhere I went, I was very impressed with the poll workers themselves, who clearly had excellent training, and the poll managers particularly were just very impressive. And the results I saw were a very smooth election. Not to say that there aren't problems that are caused by a variety of different things, but they were all addressed. I also, since last summer, started watching the Board of Elections meetings and saw Ms. Williams' reports and her responsiveness to the Board, and thought that she did a terrific job reporting and responding, and clearly the Board of Elections itself has confidence in her, given that they have unanimously recommended her for this position. In addition to that, the Carter Center report and the report by the independent panel support these observations, and one quote in that report applies here. Fulton County Board of Elections and Registration is engaged in helping to drive these improvements. Replacing the Board would not be helpful and would in fact hinder the ongoing improvement to Fulton County elections. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. Maria Gaudio, Fulton County resident. As being a poll watcher and also witnessing the cheating firsthand, I know that it comes from the top. You know, the Georgia Record Johns Creek Post made a three-page litany of Nadine Williams' crimes, criminal offenses, and many of which I witnessed firsthand, so, as a poll watcher, and filmed. So, you know, I just can't believe she's still up for this position while she isn't in handcuffs and taken away. For $185,000, you could have somebody with two PhDs who can do simple math and maintain voter rolls accuracy. You know, a vote for Nadine is a vote for election fraud. It is a vote for incompetence. It's a vote, you know, when their cheating goes on, there's a lot of little side things going on that look like it's, oh, simple incompetence and little mistakes while somebody else is doing the real work, and that is being allowed. So if anybody votes for Nadine Williams, you're voting to continue election fraud in Fulton County. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matt Rosenzack, Fulton County resident, and this is very simple. I mentioned a couple of weeks ago in our previous meeting, do you believe in following the law? I would hope so. If you don't, that's a whole different matter. I shared several examples last meeting of last year where the law was violated, both state and federal. We shouldn't even be having this conversation. That should be the end of it. If you can't follow the law, you don't deserve to be Elections Director. This is such an important and critical position, and I feel silly and ridiculous to even put this argument out there today. If you can't follow the law, you don't deserve to be Elections Director, and especially not at $185,000 a year. I've seen Ms. Williams come before you more than once. You have questions for her. She doesn't have answers. Who does that remind you of? And this is all while, in the last year, she's essentially been in the interview process. So this is the performance that you get for $185,000 during an interview process. So I think anybody with a rational mind would understand it's certainly not going to get better if you confirm her. I mean, that's really it. I could share a lot of examples with you. I guess I'll just close with, a lot of the supportive comments are very subjective. The Carter Center report was very subjective. We've brought concrete examples with you. I myself was locked out of a poll as an observer, and there were two other members there trying to observe. That is a violation of the law. That's it. Your candidacy should be done. So, and Ms. Williams was not supportive of resolving that. So, vote no for Nadine. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Waits. I have a 20-year resident of Fulton County. For a little bit of my background, I want to talk to you about government today. I have spent 25 years, most recently as the Government Affairs Director at the Atlanta Community Food Bank. I'm not representing them today. I have been a lobbyist for Voices for Georgia's Children for five years and the first Policy Director. I have spent those 25 years in nonpartisan roles, and I believe in good government. I appreciate each of you giving your time to work on this important issue today. Since leaving the nonprofit sector, I volunteered with the Fulton County Democratic Party through the 2022 election cycle. I gave 400 hours to coordinating our volunteers for the vote review and the ballot duplication panels that we provided down at the Election Center. Of the people who have spoken today against Ms. Williams, I have seen exactly two of them providing any time for any party down at the Election Center, while 50-plus of us did the hard work on behalf of the Republicans and the Democrats for processing ballots. If people believe these allegations, they need to go to the form of government that requires an attorney and a judge. These challenges are not substantiated. However, you have a bipartisan Board of Registrations and Elections. Mark Wingate, Kathleen Ruth, Terry Crawford, Aaron Johnson, and a chair that you all, this body, elected. They, Republicans and Democrats together, have recommended a candidate to you.
15 seconds.
I want to ask that you continue to follow the governmental structures we have and take their good advice. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Art Gamble. I am an attorney and a resident of Fulton County. I live in Midtown, and I am here speaking today to support the hiring of Nadine Williams as the Director of Elections. And my comments here today are based on my personal experience, serving as an official election observer for the Democratic Party of Fulton County at the English Avenue Election Center, both on Election Day in November of 2022, as well as the runoff election in December of 2022. On both days, I was there at the Election Center from 8:00 AM until almost midnight, and I can tell you that for me and everyone else who was observing there, it was the most boring and uneventful days of our lives, and that's exactly what you want when you're carefully tabulating votes and trying not to, you know, become the subject of national news media stories. Several of the observers that I was there with had been present for those processes in 2020 and told me that it was night-and-day difference in terms of the improvements. These were Republicans telling me that. Nobody of any party who was a partisan observer had anything of any import to report back to their campaigns or back to their parties. It made me proud to be a Fulton County citizen that day, that we were avoiding the kind of issues that you see national media seizing upon. Given the improvements that have happened under Ms. Williams' leadership as interim Director, I can't imagine why we would change course, given the improvements that have happened since 2020. Thank you.
Last five speakers in Assembly Hall, please come down. Mary Jo Pead, Jane Zolin, Laurie Altman, Anne Gray Herring, and Phil Looney.
Okay, the 30 minutes have expired, Colleen. How many do we have? We have five more here in the Assembly Hall. How many in Zoom?
And we have three on Zoom and six emailed-in comments.
Okay. You want to hear from them? All right, continue.
Thank you. My name is Mary Jo Pead. I'm a resident and a voter of Fulton County. I'm appearing today in support of the decision by the BOC to approve the recommendation of the BRE to hire Ms. Williams as the Director of Fulton County's Department of Registration and Election. I've appeared before this Board a number of times, speaking on behalf of the Department and of the BRE. I also want to state that there are four very specific items that you ought to consider. The first being, it's my career as a corporate attorney for Bell South. I had the privilege of having York County Manager Dick Anderson as my client and to work with him for many years. I supported two of the business units that Mr. Anderson led while at Bell South. As you all do, I trust his business judgment and his organizational aptitude. I understand that Mr. Anderson is in favor of this appointment, and I think that's an important distinction to make. The BRE, which is a bipartisan organization, unanimously, Republicans and Democrats together, have recommended the hiring of Nadine Williams. The Performance Review Board and the Carter Center have both issued their reports. The Performance Review Board individually donated hundreds of hours to their endeavor observing and reviewing practices and procedures and other documents from the Department. And the Carter Center donated over 4,000 man-hours observing the Department. Both of these entities, in their reports, support where the Department of Registration and Election is now and where it is going in the future, under the leadership of Nadine Williams. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for your service and for this opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jane Zalek. I'm a resident of Fulton County, and I'm here today because I was absolutely delighted to see that the Fulton County Board of Registrations and Elections unanimously chose Nadine Williams to become their Election Director. This bipartisan group worked hard to review her work, and I believe she's been really transparent and conscientious and courageous in stepping forward at a time of great turmoil when the BRE's been under intense scrutiny, both nationally and at the state level. Personally, I have served as a poll worker. I've worked as bipartisan Citizen Vote Review Board on the behalf of the Democrats. I've been a ballot duplication panelist, a volunteer logistics and testing observer, and a volunteer risk audit observer. Through that work, I have had the opportunity to see the results of Ms. Williams' work and her staff, and to work with people who are Republicans and a bipartisan manner, and as an earlier speaker said, there were not problems. Very conscientious, very thorough issues. No one there had an issue with anything that was happening on the ground in any of the days that I was there. I enthusiastically support her promotion, and I encourage you to do the same and expeditiously hire her as Fulton County's next Election Director. She has been very neutral and nonpartisan in her outlook and approach, and works well with all kinds of people on all issues, and I hope that you will vote yes for her.
15 seconds.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Laurie Altman, and I live in Fulton County, live in Sandy Springs. First of all, I want to see from the people that are here, who has worked in the elections? Who's actually volunteered? Okay. I've actually done it myself, and I've worked in North Fulton and South Fulton, and I've seen a big difference in the way the elections were handled in North Fulton. There were so many problems, so many issues. I also worked with South Fulton, where it went off without a hitch. So, yeah, there were discrepancies. We really should be looking at this as what is, what gives us the clearest, best, most honest elections? And it should not be a partisan issue. It should just be cut and dry. What is the right thing to do? We've got people here that have shown, week after week, month after month, that there are so many laws broken. If Nadine Williams was so conscientious, then why are these things not addressed and they're, they just keep happening? I'm, you guys, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, with that being said, the Commission has made decisions in the past that could be forgiven due to unknowing. It could be accepted that you didn't realize there was so much fraud, inconsistencies, voter suppression in the most obvious ways, incompetence, broken machines, and I can go on and on, but that, but there, but now there is no excuse. The investigations have been done, and there are facts and lawsuits that back up the allegations. The election was not fair. It was not transparent. So now the...
Good morning. My name is Anne Gray Herring, and I am the Policy Analyst for Common Cause Georgia. Common Cause is a nonprofit, nonpartisan advocacy organization that works to strengthen public participation in our democracy. We actively engage in elections and election administration across the state. We would like to encourage this body to finalize the appointment of a Director of Registration and Elections for Fulton County. With municipal elections on the horizon, the county will be better served by the stability of having a permanent appointee in place. Interim Director Nadine Williams has served during the 2022 election cycle and previously served as Elections Chief and Elections Equipment Manager, and on January 12th was voted the sole finalist by the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections, following a national search. A permanent appointee in the role will help Fulton County better prepare, not just for the upcoming municipal elections, but the presidential election in 2024. This next year will involve a lot of preparation and problem-solving to lay a solid foundation for the busy 2024 cycle. This is likely to go more smoothly with an experienced and established Director at the helm. Common Cause Georgia values equity and efficiency in the administration of elections, transparency in the elections process, and ensuring that all citizens have access to the ballot box. We believe that Nadine Williams will uphold these standards as Elections Director, and that finalizing her appointment will serve to move Fulton County forward. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Phil Looney. I live in Roswell, Georgia, for the second half of my life. I enjoy it. Thank you so much. Somebody earlier had said, I serve as Legislative Liaison, a volunteer position for the Fulton County Democrats. I've worked the state capitol for the last decade. Somebody said all these things come from the top. You're right. SB 202. We didn't have enough time to adapt, but we did. We also had the situation where someone in this very panel won by very slim margins, and I didn't hear any complaints from that person. and I didn't hear any complaints from that person. So I would assume that this was an honest election. One of the things that caused this was the lack of drop boxes, which was done by the state to eliminate an ease of voting for the most handicapped in our county. When I voted in the pandemic at East Roswell Library, I did it with a drop box. When I voted again this year in the election, I watched as he had to walk all the way into the voting room to deposit in the drop box, which nobody was watching because we had voters there. So we had a late census, where it seems that we didn't get, in Georgia, the extra person that we should have, but somebody up in the Montana area got an extra congressperson. And you see that the removal of the drop boxes, the late redistricting was very confusing, that we have done the job we did, and that the Carter Center came in
Fifteen seconds.
and approved it. And why did they do the Carter Center? Because the state that instituted this law didn't have the capability to do it. I support Nadine Williams. Thank you so much.
Any other speakers here in Assembly Hall? All right, how many were there on Zoom?
We have three speakers on Zoom. Three.
All right, quickly. We have ten minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Commissioners. The first person to speak is Robbie Caban.
Thank you. I'm reaching out again to Fulton County Animal Control Council continuously. Since you all received the whistleblower statements in November of 2022, six of them, four were from 2022, and we have since then increased the animal control budget to $5 million, which you all approved in December of 2022, with the exception of the two newest Commissioners who joined in 2023. Please be aware that the no-kill data that you are receiving is not verified, and that is why we have been requesting an audit. The no-kill data that the vendor claims Lifeline does not include animals that are not picked up, left in our streets. As you know, they haven't picked up animals for quite some time. That just changed yesterday. That is a mandate required by our county contract. Also, it doesn't include the animals that die in our facility due to the maulings, due to the overcrowding, or the disease. It doesn't include the cats not picked up that are scavenging throughout our county, multiplying, attracting coyotes, a dangerous condition, as well as other animals. I'd also like to add that the marketing that is included on county platforms claiming that the no-kill equation is being implemented is false, and those are county platforms misinforming the public. Further, the Georgia Animal Control Welfare Board, which is again required by the state, has not met, and there's no information on it whatsoever. We've actually had to increase funding for satellite facilities due to the overcrowding, and I've spoken directly with the Department of Public Safety employee, Alton Adams, who's told me that his priority were the animals in the facility, the employees, as well as the public receiving services. Well, the animals in our facility are impacted because they're riddled with disease, and it's due to poor sanitation. Due to poor sanitation because we're understaffed. We're understaffed due to the toxic
Fifteen seconds.
environment that is being allowed and cultivated by Lifeline. If you're okay with guns in our facility, if you're okay with our animals being attacked for their sperm, literally sexually attacked in our kennel, then don't do an audit. We need an audit. They're voiceless animals, and our employees and the public
Next speaker. All right, that's it.
Greetings. Greetings, one and all. Ben Howard, Senior Advocate, Public Policy Analyst. Seniors and friends of senior citizens, let's create Notebook 51 to take to the polls on Election Day. Every now and then, an issue comes along that needs to be remembered at election time. Such an issue is Fulton County Ordinance 23-0-0051. In Ordinance 51, six Fulton County Commissioners gave the Atlanta Housing Authority the right to have two votes on the Board of Directors of the Fulton County Commission on Elder Affairs, the guardian of senior citizens in our county. With two potential votes on each Commission on Elder Affairs agenda item, the Atlanta Housing Authority has twice as many votes as nine other board members on the Commission on Elder Affairs, including North Fulton Senior Services, South Fulton Senior Services, and the representative for each of the seven Fulton County Commissioners, who have only one vote each. That Atlanta Housing Authority double vote needs to be recorded in the Election Day Notebook 51. In parting, go to www atlantshousing.org and just try to find the next meeting date for the Atlanta Housing Authority Board of Directors. Stay tuned.
Is there one more?
Hello? My name is Brett Cromier. I'm Milton resident, Fulton County. Two weeks ago, you cut me off from my two-minute commentary. I shouldn't need to remind you, but you work for me, for the public, for we, the people. You provide plenty of time for the people that work for you, who are paid by us, the taxpayers. You provide endless amount of time for all your proclamations. You give these items as much time as they need, yet you give the public only 30 minutes. My ability to redress my government is more important than your lunch appointment. Two weeks ago, there are 14 people on Zoom, so allowing each of them to speak for the full two minutes instead of one minute would cost you only 14 minutes. Moreover, at least five of those speakers did not respond, so they would have cost you even less time. You need to increase the amount of time for public commentary period to be longer than 30 minutes, and allow all speakers to have their full two minutes. The most egregious of all government tyranny is to take away our First Amendment rights. For people that come down in person or sign up on Zoom to speak, they deserve to be heard, especially if they have a disagreement with our government. It is your responsibility to sit there and listen to your constituents. Hopefully, you will do more than just listen, but to think, ponder, and act on the information you receive. Today, I will finish my point about Nadine Williams from two weeks ago. During this election cycle, she was made aware of at least eight people who are disenfranchised from their ability to vote properly due to problems with the incorrect combo code. Her response was that it was no big deal, there's only eight people, and it didn't affect the election results. This is a horrible precedent to set, that disenfranchised voters only matter if it affects the outcome of an election. How can she accept any disenfranchisement? Has she given you all a satisfactory explanation of the situation? Do you even know about the situation? She is unqualified for this job because her lack of consideration of each and every voter is obvious, and you need to keep looking to find a more competent Elections Director. With the remainder of my time allotted, I also want to bring up the mask mandate during jury duty. It is well past time to let the judge know he is infringing on our rights and for you all to put pressure on him to remove this mandate. At the March 22nd, 2022 election, a full year ago, you correctly realized to remove mask mandates from all government buildings and services, but you've done nothing about the court, even though Dr. Paxton said wearing a mask is a personal risk decision.
Anyone else on Zoom? All right, how many emails?
We have six email comments.
Six. Can you summarize them quickly?
The first email comment is from Alan Powell. My wife Betty and I are old hands at campaigning, especially in GOP presidential elections. We have been engaged since Ronald Reagan and worked really hard in '16 and '20. One thing stands out, and I want to speak about, a lack of enthusiasm. We run into and ask for campaign signs and stickers. I usually just make my own signs. This past election cycle, it was very hard to get signs, even with our usual donations to put out for GOP persons. There seems to be a shortage of signs available, especially late in the election cycle. We consistently saw more of Democratic signs. I see a failure at grassroots level to supply signs to folks like us who travel all over the state. Don't discourage the grassroots volunteers by being chintzy with the signs. Our strength is in changing with the times, not beating the same old drum. The next comment is from Michelle Sardisi. Hiring an Elections Director should not be a partisan issue, and for me, along with countless others in Fulton County, it is not. We simply want you, as oath-based county Commissioners, to serve us and the entire county well. Nadine Williams is not qualified, and you know this. She does not follow the law. She does not even be prepared for meetings with you. The Commissioners have pages upon pages of documented errors and outright lawbreaking from our last couple of elections with Williams at the helm. She was the elections team remained in violation, and you sit there today, and the numerous filed complaints were not responded to in the required 10 days of receipt of the complaint. You have thousands of specific examples of bad votes based on voter home addresses listed as empty lots, P.O. boxes, warehouses, and commercial buildings. Finally, let's remember that you have a fiscal responsibility to the county. In addition to paying five times as much per voter in Fulton as our neighboring county, Cobb County, largely based on outrageous overtime, you want to pay an unqualified Elections Director $185,000. We have similar comments from Jennifer Landinkins, Kami Nail, and Alexa Fink. The last comment is from Keith Ames. Comment, please investigate and audit Lifeline Fulton and DeKalb Counties whistleblower complaints, abuse of animals, selling of drugs out of Fulton animal control pickup vehicles, hostile work environment towards whistleblower employees, cover-up of illicit activities, track and account for donations to shelters, allegations of masturbating male pit bulls, need to encourage backyard breeders, and the lack of proper action by Lifeline places the lives of Fulton County residents as risk of injury and/or death. This concludes the comments.
No further speakers.
Thank you. Continue, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page 14, Presentations to the Board, 230126, MARTA Quarterly Update.
Mr. Greenwood, welcome. Come on down, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Pitts. Good morning, everyone. Chairman Pitts and Commissioners, it's Colleen Greenwood. I'd like to bring our Q1 briefing to you all. I also wanted to acknowledge and thank our board members, Frida Hardidge, Stacey Blakely, and Al Pond, who are watching remotely, and also thank the MARTA folks that are here this morning, Shelley Pert, Colleen Kirnen, Carrie Rocha, and Ian Cara. If I may, can I just advance with, is there a clicker somewhere? I'll just say next slide. Thank you. All right, first slide, please. Thank you. This, I won't spend a lot of time talking about this. We'll talk about it a little bit later in the presentation, but this is a fantastic event on December 16th, and in the images, you'll recognize some familiar faces. Joe Carr of College Park, Lance Robertson of East Point, Chairman Pitts, Natalie Hall, and Mary Margaret Oliver, to name a few. But again, we'll get into the event itself later on today. Next slide, please. Our typical agenda includes operations updates and an update on the 2040 capital expansion. Next slide. And one more slide, please, as we get into the nuts and bolts of our operation, largely the ridership. So this is a review of, you know, what our ridership has been doing since February of 2020. Year-over-year increases, steady increases. I would say to you, even though December shows a dip, I would say if you look along the bar or the line graph, you will see that it's a seasonal dip. So every December, we experience a similar reaction. Thank you. I would also point out that we have 62, rail is at about 52% of pre-COVID ridership, and buses at about 62% of pre-COVID ridership. You can see mobility at 80%, and streetcar, though it was up to 70% at one point, has dipped really largely due to the change in mode just late last year, which will be recovering very, very soon. The other thing I want to talk to you about is the fact that our workforce has, you know, last year, we would come in and say, on base of 1,300 operators, we were up to 250 operators short. I want to thank the MARTA team. We are now 100% in our bus operator realm. It has not been easy in this landscape, but we've managed to do that. Ongoing problems now include absenteeism. So we have about 28, 25% absenteeism in the bus ranks, 18% absenteeism in the rail ranks. However, we've got a program in place, and we're moving steadily towards improving that, including incentives and disincentives, and a slight structural change to add more focus on absenteeism at work. I also wanted to just take a second and drop some great news here. It's probably out in the newspapers this morning, may not have reached yet, but MARTA has recently received great news that S&amp;P, the bond rating agency, has taken the rare step of upgrading us from AA+ to AAA. And now AA+ is a standing often, you know, typically achieved by, you know, high-performing transit agencies. There are probably three or four agencies in the country that have a AAA, and now MARTA counts as one of them. This gives us access to better finance rates and refinance rates and more efficient delivery of our capital projects, and really, it's a loud endorsement of the prudent MARTA board policies in place and solid fiscal management and stewardship. I really want to thank our CFO, Raj Srinath, and his finance team for such stellar work. Next slide, please. Just updating you on the MARTA REACH program, we are in the evaluation phase now, and so a key part of that evaluation is the team collaboration. So we're doing that with our partners at Georgia Tech, as well as some software developers and transit providers to complete that evaluation. A bit about the metrics right now, we know that over 50% of riders were under 44 years of age. We know that 35% of rides in the pilot program were taken in the final month, which speaks to the fact that it's word-of-mouth, and it's a popular mode once people figured out that it was happening. And that 39% of our riders said that they would otherwise have used another form of transit, which means 61% of riders would not have taken transit at all. So we find these to be successful. We're looking at these in other demographics and zone characteristics, costs, and sustainability. Ultimately, we feel that on-demand, an on-demand component appears to be a viable option for inclusion in the mix of services that we can provide. So we will discuss budgets and service bundles with our board this spring. Next slide, please. Wanted to bring everyone's attention to the track replacement that's going on, TR4. So that starts February 17th at 9:00 p.m., and it goes for five days. Those of you may recall that we've done this in the past. It's a really successful method of delivering these changes. We can either do it in five straight days, or we can do it, you know, day after day, weekend after weekend, really putting people out for an extended amount of time. So this was very successful because we had customer and community readiness, we have contractor efficiency, and in other words, you don't have to tear down and set up each time in time for, you know, to work inside of that two-hour maintenance window. We have supportive resource utilization and overall reduction of inconvenience. So this upcoming work will be done on the red line between Buckhead and Medical Center stations. You can see there that we'll have bus shuttles, local bus shuttles going from Med Center to Buckhead, and then on to Lenox and reverse, and then an express going directly from Medical Center to Lenox Station. Extensive customer campaign is involved here, including notices and announcements in the stations, social media, radio, newspaper ads, and a full review on itsmart.com. And of course, despite all the other things that we'll be doing, we will have operational and administrative staff, boots-on-the-ground, in vests throughout the duration of those five days to make sure that our customers are well-served. Next slide, please. And once more. Thank you. Talking about station rehab, so MARTA, as you may know, is, we have a $1 billion, thereabouts, station rehab program at all 38 of our stations, but I wanted to talk about these two in particular. HE Homes, we're planning our HE Home station rehab, and we've launched our transit-oriented development planning in December. We had a listening event, and I really wanted to thank Commissioner Kadeja for your leadership and engagement. The design is now at 60%, and we're dealing with the scope of the canopy as it's being developed. On College Park, the work at College Park continues to progress. We have a punch list of items being addressed. All the concrete is now poured on external sidewalks, and you'll see new landscaping, cleaning, and plaza-level pavers in progress. There have been some weather delays. The cold weather means that concrete ceiling had become a challenge, but the platform paver installation starts in earnest in August of this year. Next slide, please. When it comes to our bus shelters and amenities, want to update you there. So this is part of a five-year program. We are now near four. The FY22 50 amenity status went as such. There are 31 installed. There are eight under construction right now. I'll remind you that the construction timeframe is about four weeks. There are nine in permitting, which is approximately a 12-week process, and two in design, which is an additional four weeks. Of course, there are additional plans for 50 more amenities in FY23, and currently, those amenity status stand as 48 in design and two in permitting. What it means, though, is that after those 50 in FY23 are done, we will have about 23% of all bus stops in Fulton County served by amenities. Next slide, please. And so what that means in picture form is here, the before and after. This is the Piedmont service, but you can see, again, we have shade, rest, and refuse containers available on the right. We also have protection from water We also have protection from water overhead and underfoot, and we also have a sidewalk put in there for safer access and ingress from the, from the station amenities. You, you can see a copy of all the installations in FY twenty-two in the hard copy handout that we brought for you today. Next slide, please. So the South Fulton planning update, we briefed District Five and District Six late in 2022. The project team briefed South Fulton mayors on December thirteenth, and the MARTA planning staff met with G dot on January twentieth, all of this to discuss short-term safety improvements and longer-term initiatives. MARTA, in working with these groups, has identified a priority list of safety improvements at intersections on Roosevelt Highway in each of the five cities. So that would be Palmetto, Fairburn, Union Cities, City of South Fulton, and College Park, and we're working with each city to advance those improvements. Next slide, please. In terms of North Fulton, the I two eighty-five express lanes, also known as the top-end B R T, we're working to select the planning consultant for this project. We kicked off the project in the first meaningful way with our policy working group kickoff in January. The Georgia four hundred express lanes transit is, we're working with G dot there to procure the design and builder. August is the expected selection date for that, and continued coordination and collaboration is, is going to ensue in that area. In December, we entered into a partnership with the North Fulton CID to do transit oriented development and station area planning. So that's good news as we progress this project as well. Next slide, please. Artbound, I just wanted to take a second and just talk about Artbound, and I, I think folks in the room are well aware of the installs and the, the impact that Artbound, the MARTA program, has had in its wake over the, over the recent years. But we're once again partnering with Fulton County Arts and Culture to sponsor an artist in this initiative, which is the Artist in Residence, and, and, and sponsor this to have them explore the intersection, this year, the intersection of technology and the arts. So we'll, the, the residents this year will have the opportunity to use Microsoft's A I technology to create an interactive public art experience. Fulton County has established the Public Art Future Lab, Futures Lab, which is located at Underground Atlanta. There are three artists per year, and MARTA Artbound sponsors one of them, and the goal this year, of course, as I said, is to explore how public art can leverage technology to reach a wider audience. Next slide, please. In terms of MARTA's Council for the Arts, it's a, it's a seven-person council, and this year, we have four of them represented by or in Fulton County. So it's made up of local and regional arts professionals who advise and contribute to MARTA's Artbound program. Again, you know, the work that we've been doing over the years is informed by people who are credible in the space, in, in their own, in their own art skillset themselves, and reflective of the community and the community desires. So Fulton County is well represented with Chris Swain from East Point, Axia Pascal from Roswell, Erica Smith, Sandy Springs, and Brianna Camello from East Point. Next slide, please. So the new rail car event, I, I said I would, you know, talk about this a little bit more. Again, I really want to thank Chairman Pitts and Vice Chair Hall for joining us to celebrate the arrival of the first C Q four hundred rail cars. That happened on December sixteenth. The cars stopped over in Atlanta from Stoddler's, manufacturer in Hungary, on their way to Salt Lake City to complete the build-out. That's going to take a year. They'll be back in 2024, and they will begin service in 2025. Our guests were able to participate in a virtual reality experience, previewing the new car features, and it's my understanding that we are working hard to bring that virtual reality experience here to Fulton County in, in coming weeks, setting it up with a, with a trailer and some electronics, so that folks that weren't there get a chance to experience the interior of the rail car as, as, as you will in 2025. I'm grateful to the organizers and the guests and participants for their part in this well-attended, informative, and inspiring event. And if we can play the video, that would be very helpful. I'm not sure. And if not, let me just assure you, it's, it's an engaging video that really talks to the fact that this, this design is customer-driven. There's a lot of input from our, our various community groups that we're working closely with Connie Crisack, our designer, and, and, and really getting comments from the A T U, from the community, and just even operators talking about how excited they're going to be to be a part of this project. So it also gave you a firsthand view as you walk through the, through the vehicle of, you know, the open gangway design, the design, the improved design in seating and information systems available to customers, the high-tech inside of the operator's cabin or, or cockpit, if you will. It really resembles an airplane without wings, and we think that that's going to inspire employment in, at MARTA. It's going to inspire ridership, and it's just going to inspire that feeling of pride from all involved. Next slide, please. And finally, you know, I just want to thank everyone here for your, your January eighteenth proclamation as Coy Dumas Junior Day in Fulton County. Mr. Dumas, being a fifty-year employee, has been driving the same bus route for fifty years without incident, without accident, and moreover, has been a, a real example to, to all of us at MARTA. And so it was really, just really great to see, to see everyone gathering around and, and really supporting him. So thank you, Commissioner Hall, for sponsoring this proclamation. We estimate that Mr. Dumas has carried two-point-eight million passengers since he began operating a bus. He holds a spotless driving record, having driven over two million miles without an incident. So thank you for that. And finally, just returning the floor to you, Chairman Pitts, I, I believe that's the end of our presentation. Next slide, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Just have one, I'd like you to clarify. I think you said that fifty percent of the riders are under forty. Does that?
Forty-four years old and under.
Forty-four?
Yeah.
That's really instructive.
It really is. Yeah. I, I think it, it may have a lot to do with, you know, the, the technology, the, the availability of on-demand using your phone, and we're just getting into that demographic where that's an expectation.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Abdul-Razman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to take this opportunity to openly thank you all for the REACH program. Again, my constituents are still talking about it. It was a great success, in my opinion, and I think it showed the ability for you all to listen to the constituents and kind of tailor something that really did work. I had an opportunity to talk to the city council members, and they had the same sentiments. And so I just wanted to openly, again, thank you for the REACH program. I'm excited about it, and I look forward to be, it being a staple of a MARTA. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, other questions or comments from Mr. Greenwood? Commissioner Thorne.
I just want to briefly congratulate you on that bond rating. That's very, a very big accomplishment, and you guys should be proud of that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much. See you next quarter.
Okay.
If not before. Madam Clerk?
Bottom of page fourteen, twenty-three zero one two seven, presentation of the Fulton County Operational Report.
Mr. Managers.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We want to welcome Dr. Paxton and her team back today as part of this update for her quarterly update, and I'm assured we'll have better answers than we had last time relative to any of the things relating to medical issues. Thankfully, all the trends look good, and she'll, she'll speak to that. We've also asked for her to do a deeper dive on environmental health and restaurant inspections, where we are in a situation where we have a backlog of about twenty-three hundred restaurants due to staffing issues, but showing good improvement with staffing actions that the Board of Health has taken. So I'm sure you'll be interested in that. We're not reporting on this today, but we have begun our discussions with Grady Hospital, jointly with DeKalb, on new operating agreement. We'll continue to keep you informed on the progress on that. We had a very good first meeting with them this week relative to their community needs assessment. I think that'll dovetail nicely with the work that we're doing with outside consultants and Morehouse, looking at health access gaps that have been caused by the Wellstar closures. So we look forward to bringing back information in the near future on our perspective that will be gained through that work, as well as an update on Grady. Dr. Rochelle could certainly answer any questions that you may have this morning. We continue to work with our Justice Partners on Project Orca. We've included that information in your package. We had a very productive meeting this week with all the Justice Partners, focused specifically on actions to be taken in reducing the jail population. Alton Adams is out on sick leave today, unfortunately. We could answer any questions that may come up, but we'll plan to provide you more detail when he returns, as well as answer the questions raised during the jail feasibility study discussion. Most importantly, I, I think from our perspective, we want to update you on the legislative efforts regarding the Behavioral Health Crisis Center. Jessica Corbett and her staff have done, and our lobbyists, have done a terrific job getting us in, in front of the right people, both at the delegation level as well as committee chair level. I want to thank the Chair and Vice Chair for coming and giving their support this week to the Committee in the House. By the way, it was, it was almost unneeded in one sense, because the Commissioner did such a great job describing the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, the need for it in Fulton County, and the funding that will be, will be necessary. But it was great to have our leadership compliment his excellent presentation. I wanted to briefly tell you that the effort to completely restore and reopen our facilities post the events in the winter days of Christmas or so, Christmas Eve, to be specific, have continued and made great progress. O C Library and Hayville Senior Centers are completely restored and open. The Milton Library carpet, if you're not familiar with it, it was very unique, and it has been found and has been sourced, and will be in the first week of March. That library's been open, but replacing that carpet's very important to the patrons. And then the Mills Center, where we had the heaviest damage due to flooring, or due to the flooring needing to be replaced, it'll be completed on February the twentieth. We still have issues with the jail elevators due to parts unavailability, and Joe's been working with the sheriff and the sheriff's office on workarounds, but there, we are hampered, but not without elevator service. So again, I want to thank Joe and his team for really a terrific effort. Speaking of facilities, as you know, we're moving close to a date in the March-April timeframe where we'll move elections to the, what I'm calling the Operation Center, the South Fulton Operations Center. May work on that naming, but it's so much more than a warehouse, even though that was its original intent when it was designed. We have turned it into what I think will be the most significant investment that we'll make in elections, giving them end-to-end capability in one location for their machines, logic and accuracy testing, where absentee ballots can be received, and where their staff will be located, where also the public can see in real time and with video all of our elections activities. So I think it's, again, gives us an enormously strong operational platform for elections going forward. Last, Finance continues to work on finalizing and publishing the 2023 budget, as well as monitoring the ARPA budget, and Sharon can address any questions that you may have. I think when, after we've done a walkthrough of this, Sharon will also pass out a summary of all the actions approved in the budget and follow-ups that we'll have to do to effectuate those actions for your information this morning. Couple more things I just wanted to say. Just as a reminder, the next twelve to eighteen months, we have a huge, huge agenda. As you know, as I just mentioned, we'll complete this South Fulton Operations Center. We'll also deliver the animal shelter on Fulton Industrial. If everything works according to plan, the Behavioral Health Crisis Center will be fully underway in terms of construction and a expected delivery date of January of 2024. We will complete this operating agreement with Grady, plus any additional initiatives in public health that we'll find with the work with the consultants that we will be doing, and I'm sure that will require your consideration and investment. And of course, maybe the penultimate is a clear path forward relative to the Fulton County Jail. So many things in front of us over the next twelve to eighteen months. Last, I've sent you a note and pleased to also say for public consumption that we have appointed a new Chief Information Officer, Kevin Carrigan. He's joining us from stints at both Gwinnett, most recently in Hillsborough County, has over twenty years' experience, and I think will fit greatly with, with our team and be a huge compliment to the efforts that we have and the importance of technology. I also want to thank Chief for his efforts as the interim, keeping us pointed in the right direction, and everything that he continues to do on a day-to-day basis and, and the rest of that team. So, Mr. Chairman, the plan today is to have Dr. Paxton be the primary star of the show, and then if there are any other questions on these other areas, we'll, we'll answer those. So I'll be glad to have Dr. Paxton come down.
Dr. Paxton, you have the floor.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be, be back here in front of you all again. I'm going to change things up just a little bit today in terms of our presentation, because I've been on this job now for almost three years. You've seen a lot of me. You've heard from me a lot. What I thought would make some, a great sense to be for, have you, you'd have a chance to meet the heads of some of our departments that are taking on some of this, sorry, who are, you know, who really are responsible with their teams for doing this. So what we're going to do is, we're going to have Dr. Brandon Lechtwitch, who is the Director of our Environmental Services, will be doing that part of the presentation. Then to be followed by Beatrice King, who is our Public Health Analyst, who is a specialist in our opioid and other, you know, narcotics-related things. We have then, you have not seen Dr. Alicia Frye yet. Dr. Frye is, had a storied career at CDC. She is an infectious disease physician and was most recently the head of the influenza branch at CDC. So she'll be covering, she is our new director, well, I guess not that new, but relatively new, a Director of Clinical Services, so nursing and medical and preventive services. She'll be covering that portion of the, of the presentation, along with the COVID presentation. And then, of course, we will have, we have Dr. Felicia Mobley, who is our Program Director, and so she will be covering that port. And then we'll all be here to, to answer questions. So we're, we'll try to keep this as smooth and seamless as, as we can. So can we have the first slide, please? You're going to be up first.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Next slide. We're going to start off with environmental health, just to kind of give you all an update and an overview of the program. Our specialists, we're working hard to get our establishments up to speed with their annual inspections. Typically, for an environmental health specialist, we can conduct maybe about three to four inspections on a good day, and that's daily. We're also in environmental health, working on adjusting our fees to reflect the new mobile food service law that went into effect January first of 2023. Next slide. Getting into the numbers for the program, we roughly have about sixty-five hundred active facilities here in Fulton County. Now, this number will increase, it'll fluctuate, it'll increase as we get more restaurants to come in, and it'll also decrease as certain restaurants close for business. But on average, we have about sixty-five hundred. We currently have about twenty-three hundred restaurants that are, where we consider backlog. And what that is, is restaurants that have not received their routine inspection within over a year. As of February first, when I ran the numbers, we were looking around thirty-five percent of our restaurants that have not had their routine inspection within over a year. That number has actually decreased, especially since I took the position in December, where we were sitting at forty-six percent, almost forty-seven percent. This is due to certain procedures that we put into place to help remedy this issue. Typically, for restaurants, the number of inspections depend on the type of restaurant that it is, or what type of foods it serves. So there are different risk types. For instance, we have a risk type one. And what that is, is that your standard, think about coffee shops, ice cream parlors, concession stands, there's not much cooking going on, it's simply prepackaged foods, you simply heat and, and just give it out, or you just pour it and serve. Those type of restaurants, we only inspect once a year. Most of our restaurants here in the county are risk type twos, and those are your standard restaurants where you're cooking, you're, you're cooling your foods, you're reheating them. Those are the majority of our restaurants, and they get inspected twice a year. Depending on staff, we are short-staffed, but we are working to become full staff, but at the rate that we're going, plus a full staff, I do anticipate our restaurants to be caught up by, by the end of fall of 2023. Next slide. So the action planned out, we're speaking to you all about early on the previous slide, is that what I did was I implemented what we call a team blitz. This meant- This method we actually put into place back in 2018, prior to the Super Bowl coming into town, back in 2019, of February of 19. And what that is, is that we'll have multiple inspectors, and we'll put them into one territory. That will actually help decrease the numbers of inspections that are due. This method has, is currently working. We're going to stick to this method, and as we get more inspectors in, we have more inspectors into a territory, and in turn, it'll help with these numbers. As of January of this year, we've conducted roughly about 650 inspections. That's pretty good with the team that we have. We have roughly about 14 inspectors that are conducting food service responsibilities. So I do anticipate this number to increase monthly as we get more inspectors in. As we speak right now, we're actually conducting interviews, so we're being proactive with that. Also, we're looking to recruit experienced environmentalists from other districts around the state. So we're trying to entice them to come over to the county, they're already trained, we all work under the same state code, so it's easier plug-and-play. That would be very beneficial as well. And we've also launched campaign ads for recruitment. So we're on the radio waves, we have commercials out there, and it seems to be working as well, because when we pulled the candidate pool, there were a large number of people applying for the positions, so which, that's very encouraging. My team, we're working very hard with what we have. I'm excited for the future, and if you all have any questions pertaining to the environmental health.
Paxton, would you like questions?
I think it might be better, well, you want, well, it's up to you, whatever you want.
All right. Commissioner Erickson?
Thank you. I see 648 inspections, but I don't really have any basis for that. I mean, what are the total number of restaurants? How many do you normally do on a monthly basis? Is that an increase or a decrease?
It's actually, it's an increase, yes, sir. What it is, is that this number is based on the number of inspectors that conduct inspections. So last month, we had around about 12 to 14 inspectors conducting routine inspections. And what I did was I asked them to let's increase the amount of inspections. Typically, we would say two inspections a day. That's a pretty good day. But I'm asking for them to just give me more throughout the day. So instead of doing two inspections, let's go ahead and do three, and if you can get in four, let's do four. So that has really helped with that number, and that's where I got the 648.
So I guess my question is more about, not about the number of inspectors. I understand you may be constrained
Right.
...by the number of inspectors that you have. I mean, but what is the, you know, is it once a month for all restaurants? What is, what is the total pool of all restaurants?
Right.
Like, what is the process or procedure? Is there a monthly schedule, a quarterly schedule? What, how does that transpire?
Typically, it's either once, they get an inspection twice a year, basically, because it just depends on the type of restaurant. So like, if it's something where the risk is low, like a coffee shop, they get inspected once a year. So if I were to go do, let's say Starbucks, if I inspect them today, they won't be due for another inspection by rule until this time next year. So that restaurant is checked off the list. So if I do an inspection that's required twice a year, I would do it in February, and then I'll go back and do another inspection six months from February, which is, what, maybe August or something like that. And that would be checked off the list as well.
All right. I don't know, a lot of these coffee houses are expanding their services and offerings.
Yeah.
And so I don't, I don't understand how someone could be skipped for a year and others are going for six months. That doesn't make sense to me.
Right. I mean, if the coffee shop is like doing like, you know, making sandwiches and things like that, that's a whole nother category. They will, the number of inspections will increase then, but if it's just simple, just think about simple operation.
Right. Well, you said Starbucks, and they're selling sandwiches now, so I'm using your example.
Yeah, it's just, it's prepackaged, it's just simply heat and go. It's, you know, it can get technical, but, you know, just.
Okay. And what is your ideal number? I see you saying you're expecting to hire 10 people.
Yes.
How many people, how many people do you need? Is that, will that be enough, or that's still, you'll still be short?
We will still be short, but we will be, we will be able to maintain. We won't necessarily go in a backlog as every terri, with those 10, we'll be able to fill every territory up with an inspector. If we were to have more, I would like to create backups for our guys. So, for instance, if somebody's out on leave or something like that, we can have somebody simply plug in and help out with that territory when the inspector is out.
All right. I don't know that I have heard yet a total number.
Of inspectors?
Oh, no, you talked about the inspectors, I'm asking about the restaurants. I've been asking, yeah.
Hold. Yeah, can y'all go back one slide for me?
6,568.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, that's the total number, 6,500, is what we currently have active. And again, that number will increase as new restaurants come, but it'll also, it'll fluctuate. When restaurants close up, that number will, will, will become, will drop.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Thorne?
Thank you, Chair. To piggyback on that, are we able to offer and attract inspectors, or is the pay, our salary structured to be competitive with surrounding areas?
Right. And that's what, I've been working with my team, trying to get the competitive pay. These surrounding counties, they have comparable pay, and they will stay in their county because it's not as many as, in, you know, restaurants that we have here in Fulton County. So what we're doing is we're looking to go past the medium to attract these inspectors to come in and come work for us.
Okay. And then, one other question. You say you're adjusting fees to reflect the new mobile food service laws?
Right.
What, what are the current fees, and how are they going to change, and what are the new food service laws?
Can I just interject? We actually, that's going to come through.
Oh.
Right, on the March 1st.
We actually went through a period called a comment search, and some people sent in the queue, and then we are ready to do that this week. We have all that.
So I should just wait on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Chair Ellis.
Quick follow-up. On the, these new mobile food service laws, are they impacting these, the ability for the food trucks to stay open? Is there anything in terms of our backlog that's creating an issue for them, in terms of they need to have some sort of certification or something with, for them to continue to operate, that we can't?
Yes, we're trying to make it as seamless as possible with the food, with the new law. What it is, is that a lot of our, the trucks that vend here in Fulton County, they may have their home base in another county.
Okay.
So if they choose to continue to vend in Fulton, what they'll do, they'll just come to us and apply for authorization to vend here.
Okay.
When we get that information, when it comes to us, we assess it, and then we give them the authorization. So it hasn't created any kind of delay or anything with their service.
Okay. So the, these new laws are designed to sort of get at that issue of
Yes, having multiple
Operating in multiple jurisdictions.
There you go.
Okay.
Preventing people to have multiple permits in every county, so now it's just one permit in your home county, and then you are able to vend in multiple counties.
Okay. And then another quick question for you. You know, I know this goes back several years now, predating this administration. We had spent a good amount of time sort of as a board and, you know, having a conversation with Department of Health Administration at that time about getting, getting inspectors and so forth equipped, with all the mobile tools they needed and that sort of stuff. So I'm presuming we are equipped in terms of, you know, having those mechanisms, being able to, you know, write up a report, you know,
Right.
...mobily and all that sort of stuff, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. And then, sort of a slight follow-on to that, in terms of, and I think we'd had this discussion back then, and I think there were some changes, but maybe there was, you know, things reverted back. Obviously, we're a very geographic, you know, geographically challenged county in terms of, you know, what that means for travel for employees to do so, in particular those ones that have those kind of roles. Are all of our inspectors housed at one central location?
No, we actually have
As a home base?
Right, we have three locations.
Okay.
So we have a south office, that location is in the College Park area, then we have the 10th Park Place just right around the corner, and then we have an Alpharetta location as well.
Okay. So the, so they are geographically assigned?
Yes, sir.
And they're going in and out of those, continuing to go in and out of those offices?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? All right, do your inspectors have vehicles?
Yes, sir. Yes.
All right. Other questions?
Next slide. All right, this is a quick update on COVID-19. This is a slide that shows the daily and cumulative confirmed and probable COVID-19 cases in Fulton County. The red line is the cumulative total number of COVID-19 cases, so that includes both confirmed and probable. And since March of 2020, there have been almost 271,000 COVID cases in this county. The blue line are the confirmed cases, and the bars below the lines are the number of cases on each week. And you can see that in recent weeks, there has been fewer cases, and in fact, there were fewer cases the last two weeks, weeks in January than there were in the first two weeks of January. Next slide. So this is a slide that is also looking at cumulative number of cases for COVID-19, but this time we stratified by vaccination status. And so what you can clearly see here is that the group that has the highest cumulative number of cases is the unvaccinated group, which is depicted by the red line, which is much higher number of cases compared to the two vaccinated groups, both with and without the booster dose. In fact, the lowest cumulative number of cases is in the group that got, is fully vaccinated with the booster doses. Next slide. This is a slide that shows the proportion of outpatient and emergency department visits for the syndrome of influenza-like illness. This is a syndrome that is often used to track influenza, but it can also be caused by other respiratory viruses such as RSV or COVID. The current season is depicted by the red line, and the previous earlier seasons are depicted by the other colored lines there. What you can see is that we had a very early spike in ILI activity this year, much earlier than previous seasons, and that currently we are below the baseline of 2.5%, so it's decreased dramatically. Next slide.
Good morning. Fulton County experienced an increase in overdoses, starting on January the 4th, that evening. In all, we experienced 11 cases of overdose. This was caused by crack cocaine that was laced with fentanyl. My position is created to address and investigate these types of overdoses, to identify the individuals impacted, and also to create outreach strategies for the community. In order to do this work, I have to partner. I work with several harm reduction organizations. Here listed in the slide is Georgia Harm Reduction Coalition and ANEES. They do a lot of outreach, they have syringe access, they have a lot of medical assisted treatment. I also work with Georgia Public Safety Training Center to ensure that our first responders have Narcan training and access. Narcan is a medication that's used to reverse overdoses. Recently, the Department of Public Health created the naloxone access project, in which they will be providing us with naloxone quarterly. This is not enough naloxone for the large county that we have in Fulton, but I definitely work with as many organizations as possible to make sure that this medication is available in the areas of greatest need. I would also like to share a little bit at the bottom of this slide about what we do when an overdose occurs. So the first thing that I do is receive a notification, notification from the Department of Public Health, as well as the Georgia Poison Control Center. Once I receive this information, I notify district staff, which includes our district health director, and I request medical records from local hospitals. Once I review those records, then I'm able to confirm whether or not we have a cluster of overdoses. We identify cluster overdoses by the location where they occur, the time period they occur, and what substance was involved. Lastly, I send out one-page notifications to our first responders, to our local hospitals, law enforcement, and community partners, letting them know that something is occurring and asking for additional information. Next slide, please. I have several upcoming naloxone trainings with the Fulton County Jail and the Atlanta Public Schools nurses. I was able to assist Fulton County Jail back in November of last year with identifying a distributor for naloxone. They reached out asking for a large quantity of naloxone, and I was able to make sure they were able to make their order. I also have overdose response kits for our health centers and for local businesses. So sometimes in our medical records, we see that individuals overdose at businesses, hotels, or just other places where people gather, and we are now able to respond and train the staff there. Lastly, we have a new project that was rewarded to us from national funding, and it's called the Embedding Peers in Emergency Departments Program. This will occur at Emory University Hospital Midtown. Grady Hospital staff will mentor the physicians there in getting this program up and running. This is going to be something new for that area, but what we're hoping to do is to capture some of the people who overdose repeatedly, knowing that they are most vulnerable for death, and to really offer them services, offer them group recovery meetings, offer them treatment services if they would like to participate in them. And this program will also provide transportation to medical appointments. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Updour Rockman?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to commend you all, Dr. Paxton, to our department, because this issue here, in my short amount of time that I've been educated on, is a, not only a serious issue, it's an issue that the community this time last year was not, I would say, they didn't realize how serious it was. And just the fact that you're standing here in front of us, giving this report, the harm reduction, individuals I have had an opportunity to meet within my district, they've educated with me on the number of people that seem to be increased, which is our younger population, and the stats, and a lot of the issues with the Narcan. I'm glad that we are stepping up, Fulton County is stepping up to the plate, handling this issue, because it is an extremely serious issue. And I just wanted to openly commend that I see you standing here in front of us, talking about it today, because this is hitting my districts as well as other districts, and it's very, very serious, and whatever we can do to not only educate our constituents, but make sure that we have those kits in place, it's all worth it. So I just want to commend you all. Thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is absolutely a serious issue, and I saw it firsthand during a walkthrough of the Rodney Cook Senior Park, where I hosted my last Joan P. Garner Walk-in Health Fair. And we had an entire team from Fulton County, Jessica Corbett shaking her head already, she already knows what I'm about to say, I'm sure, but we had my entire team and the team. But we had my entire team and the team from Fulton County External Affairs and several other departments and nonprofit organizations at the park, just going over what we were going to do for the upcoming Walk in Health Fair. And a young man who looked no more than in his twenties was stumbling through the park. And we, most of us saw him, but what happened afterwards was just a tragedy. And we saw him walk onto the rocks next to the water and literally just hit the rocks. It was like the life and the soul of him just came directly out of his body. And I proceeded to call the sheriff and the ambulance and anyone that could help, and we later found out that it was a fentanyl death. So this is an issue that is critical, and I'm so happy to see that you're doing such a great job in this area. But I did hear you say something that disturbed me, and that was that there is not enough naloxone. And so what are we doing to address that? Is there funding to purchase more of it? Is there a need for funding to purchase more of it? How are we addressing that?
So currently, for purchasing naloxone, the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, they have several grants. They actually receive some of the opioid settlement dollars, and they are kind of funding training and kits for first responders. They are also doing it for community partners, and I receive some of that as well. I've also asked the Fulton County Board of Health, and they have agreed to assist with purchasing more kits. So we will get that purchase within the next couple of months.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you for all your great work on this and other areas. Glad to see you in person, addressing the restaurants. You know, I have so many, having downtown and midtown and all this new development in my district, there is a great need for that. So I hope that you do get the number of employees that you need to do the work, because there's a lot of it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Real quick, I appreciate the information on that. How sort of unrelated, but not specific to the opioid piece. And this is more of a, I guess, sort of a macro sort of issue for, for public health as a whole. You know, we've seen a proliferation, you know, we, well, states had this issue where there's been sort of chase and tail with these sort of drugs that get skirt kind of laws and get placed in very frequently convenience store channels, right? And then with the proliferation of a lot of the CBD-related stuff. So there's a lot of stuff out there in the channel, there's like Delta 8, Delta 9, that sort of stuff, that potentially presents a lot of unknown health risk. But, you know, the manufacturers of stuff have managed to somehow kind of skirt the system, because, you know, you're always sort of playing this sort of catch-up thing. Is public health looked at putting out any sort of publications related to those types of drugs that are out there right now, that are, I guess, technically sort of legally available about the dangers thereof? Okay. I mean, it'd be, it'd be a good issue to raise for state DPH, right? And I know sometimes you get the stuff in the legislature where they're trying, what was there, they were having a debate yesterday or two days ago on some other type of drug. It wasn't a Delta 8, it was this, this other thing, I forget what it was called. Where they're going to have their own things, right? But there's nothing that I would think prevent public health to put out, you know, their own sort of, hey, here's the dangers of this stuff, and get it out in the public domain, as opposed to sitting there, you know, versus waiting on, you know, you know, a legislative mechanism, you know, to act to potentially sort of, you know, derail it. And, you know, this is the kind of stuff that could be distributed to local jurisdictions and that sort of stuff to factor in when they're making zoning decisions and all that kind of stuff, right? Because, you know, they're all weighing in, you know, how many stores are going to allow that sell CBD, et cetera, and all that kind of thing. So if that's something y'all could provide some feedback on later on, I would appreciate it.
I have an answer to that. I've been in my position for 18 months, and when I first came to Fulton, the CDC put out a public health advisory about Delta 8 products, especially with the vaping. Delta 8 is, is kind of like a synthetic marijuana product, and it does cause overdoses. That means that person can stop breathing. Also, in North Fulton, they're experiencing mostly overdoses related to CBD products, where people come into the emergency room screaming, vomiting, just like uncontrolled vomiting. And so definitely there needs to be more, more messaging to let people know the risks of using these types of products. Also, the One Johns Creek Coalition, they're, they receive the Drug-Free Communities Grant, but they have worked with their local city council and their mayor to decrease the amount of vape shops that are zoned, especially around schools. And they also have kind of like secret shoppers to go in to see if these harmful products are being sold to young people.
It's on that secret shopper thing, and I don't know if this is accurate or not, right? You know, but I'd also heard, heard that the way that that product can get formulated and put into a system, it can go in looking one way, but the way it's actually sold, it's laced with something else.
Yes, and the secret shopper is really looking at how it's being labeled. Like, are they being honest with the labeling of what's in the product?
But is it, or is there anything where the secret shoppers are actually buying and testing it to see whether what's, they say is in there is actually in there, or it's actually been somewhere in the process that was reformulated and other things were added before it's sold?
I'm not sure. I don't think they have the testing ability, but they just look at how the product is labeled.
So when, when they're coming in, you're seeing this manifestation of, you know, overdoses around, you know, some of the stuff, but it's laced with other things, right? I think I heard you say that, right? These were things that were, they were overdoses, but they were...
You can, overdose can occur on marijuana.
Can occur on marijuana, but are we seeing anything where it's potentially, some things were laced as well?
Not related to the marijuana.
Not related to the marijuana stuff, okay. Well, I mean, I think there's more and more awareness of it. I'm driving down the street the other day, you know, it's a place right across the street from a church, you know. Delta 8 sold here, right? I mean, and it's, you know, I don't know what we're trying to send, you know, cut down on one avenue over here, and then we're just, you know, with the whole opioid crackdown, and then, you know, we're opening up, you know, a whole, another realm potentially, you know, on the other end. So if there's some stuff that we can do to sort of promote more of that information countywide, and share with, you know, cities and so forth, you know, it would be useful in, you know, particularly the data points around tying it into, you know, the overdoses that we are seeing, so.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Thorne?
Sorry, I had a quick question for you. With these kits, I talked with One Johns Creek with Elise Hansel quite often, and she mentioned that they have an expiration date on them. Are we, you know, having to, if so, how long do they last? If we buy them, do we have to throw them out? How do we dispose of them? Are you familiar with?
Yes, I, the kits, the expiration date is actually extended on the kits, and DPH recently gave me some information on how far out the kits can be still used. Sometimes they're not used if they expire in a medical setting, so like, the public health department may not use the expired kits, but then a lot of the harm reduction organizations will get those kits. But they still can be used after, after expiration, for many, many years.
Okay, so they just may not be as effective, but they're, could be effective for, if they pass expiration.
Yeah, they're still effective.
Okay, I'm just wondering why they put the dates.
In general, we at public health, we don't put out products that are, you know, that are expired. So we try to avoid that. And what often happens is that the manufacturer themselves will look back and say, oh, well, we have reevaluated, and this is now, you know, continuing to be, this is actually still valid. And so we do that quite a bit. You might have seen that happen recently with COVID tests. But one thing that I don't think that we have gotten enough information a lot about is that there's a program in which people can get Narcan through pharmacies. And so I, maybe what we should do, you know, I'm listening closely to what you say, Commissioner Ellis, about, you know, getting that more information into the communities about, you know, the CBD-related product as well. But I think we could also work on letting the general community know about the pharmacy access program.
Can I try my name for a moment? Hi, my name's Sarah Ferber Cordero. I'm a PhD nurse with Emory University, and I'm the Harm Reduction Nurse for Atlanta Harm Reduction Coalition. Just so everyone knows, Narcan is probably going to be approved for over-the-counter status by the FDA at the end of March. So that is probably going to change the, the way public health is, is trying to get people to carry Narcan. One of our concerns is cost, and I do think that is something that will come before this council, is how are we going to make sure that Narcan access is affordable and accessible for everyone. Two doses of Narcan currently cost $140 for one box. So usually when things go from prescription to over-the-counter, they become more expensive. So long-term, I think, thinking about strategies about how to make over-the-counter Narcan more affordable will be helpful as well. And Narcan, by the way, there've been studies that Narcan works 28 years after expiration date. 90% effective still, so thanks.
28 years, wow. Good marketing for them. And then I was just up in DC, and I was listening to some campaigns that they were doing. Do we partner with the campaigns, the national campaigns? They mentioned one, "One Kill Can, One Pill Can Kill" campaign going on, and I was texting One's Johns Creek during the thing. She said, yeah, but they tend not to like the fear, like the fear campaigns. But as a parent, I'm totally good with fear in my child, so. So I think those campaigns are good. I don't know, are we partnering with on a national level?
I work with the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Agency. They are sponsored out of Washington DC, out of the Biden administration. And we have one here located in Atlanta, and so she's kind of our federal representative. My program is sponsored from the federal level, so that's, that's how I have my position. So everything we do is on all levels, federal, state, and local.
Great. And then I was going to back up and ask about the COVID. Since the rates have gone down the past couple of weeks, are we going to stop recommending masks? Or is that, are recommendations changed at all?
Well, you, the, the mask recommendation is linked to activity level. If you look out on the CDC webpage, and when the activity levels are low, then the recommendation for wearing them more often goes down. But, you know, the, the language is caveated, so that people who are the most vulnerable, and in certain situations, certainly could still wear masks.
So that 2.5% level that...
That's not related to...
That's not related to it at all?
No, so there are different measures for COVID. What that was, that was a syndrome of cough, fever, cough or sore throat, so very common respiratory syndrome. It's very sensitive but nonspecific, and it gives us an idea of just respiratory activity. So that was different, but it, it, it's similar to what we're seeing in COVID, as, as you heard, so, so, yeah.
And there's also a new study out on the effectiveness of masks. Have you looked at that, the Cochrane Study?
Yeah, yeah, thanks. So Commissioner Thorne is referring to a Cochrane review that was recently published. The objectives were to evaluate whether masks worn by the general public reduce transmission in the community. Just to be clear, the purpose was not to address whether masks prevented transmission. That's very well documented. That's why healthcare workers wear masks, that's why it's important in many communicable diseases. So the, the study wasn't, didn't address that, it was trying to get at this bigger picture. Unfortunately, there's very little data out there to inform this. And really, what the study found is that there's very little data to actually let us know whether, you know, mask mandates actually significantly reduce transmission. In this study, they only looked at randomized controlled trials. They did not look at observational studies. There is quite a bit of observational data out there that honestly goes both ways. There is, and actually, the Cochrane group itself often uses observational data. This group decided not to. And so that really limited what they put into their models. They ended up mixing different types of studies. Some were flu-based studies, some were just nonspecific, this ILI syndrome, before the pandemic, and so, and there were different interventions. Some of them were when people came into the emergency room or the outpatient clinic with their, with their, you know, two days after their symptoms started. Then they put masks on their families, and they looked to see if, at that late period, if it reduced transmission. And no big surprise that those didn't. In fact, we learned a lot from those early studies. But, so I think the, the question is still out there. I think the goal to answer it is, you know, admirable, but I don't think we really can make any conclusions on that study.
Yeah, but the, the purpose, the, the study concluded that wearing masks was, had a little effectiveness?
No, what they said is they didn't have evidence that supported it, but it's right.
Okay, but hand washing was recommended in that study?
Right, there's quite a bit of hand washing data, and in fact, this, this group itself has done repeat analyses of hand washing over the years, and has repeatedly shown that there are some studies that show that campaigns that really work on improving compliance with hand washing. It's, it's a big behavioral change, and a big behavioral campaign that it actually works. And I think one of the criticisms of some of the studies, that the very few studies that were actually COVID-19 specific, is that there was no way they knew if people wore masks or not. They basically said, here are, you know, 50 masks, wear them. And so, you know, does it tell us that not, that a lot of people don't wear masks when they're told to? Yes. Does that tell us if masks would work to prevent transmission? Honestly, it, it can't.
Yeah, there's just conflicting studies both ways.
So unfortunately, we don't have, that's a hard question, especially with randomized controlled trials.
Thank you.
Should we keep going? Next slide. A quick overview of our nursing program. So we continue to try to vaccinate individuals with the COVID-19 booster doses, especially our most vulnerable individuals who are at high risk for severe outcomes. And we administered 927 vaccines between October and December, and we participated in 29 COVID-19 community events where we focused on the elderly and these high-risk individuals. Just last month, we launched, we launched a three-month breast and cervical cancer campaign. And in October of 2022, which was Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we offered free clinical breast exams, trying to entice women in, and then we arranged for them to get mammograms through some of our partners. We're currently actively recruiting new nurses and their supporting staff, and we completed the 2022-23 school immunization assessment audits for Fulton County and Atlanta Public School Systems. Next slide. Switching to medical and preventive services, our Ryan White Partner has recently partnered with Grady for oral health services. We administered more than 10,000 MPOX vaccinations. Two-thirds of those received their second dose, and we are actively working on trying to get the other one-third of individuals their second dose, as well as vaccinating other individuals who have not received any vaccines. Next slide. Next slide. Our sexual health services have expanded to neighborhood union, and we are launching a new awareness campaign so that people are aware of that. And the Fulton County Board of Health was the first state agency to be approved for clean needle distribution. There are some non-government organizations that are approved for clean syringe distribution, but we are the first state, and we are working to stand up that program. And we continue to partner with the other health departments in the metro Atlanta area through the Stop HIV Atlanta with the goal of reducing the number of HIV cases, new HIV cases, and identifying HIV cases and getting them linked to care so they can begin antiretroviral therapy. Next slide.
Okay, I'm going to wrap up our presentation as it relates to our health promotion activities. Our Adolescent Health and Youth Development Program is our teen pregnancy prevention program where we work with middle schools, high schools, and other after-school programs. We've reached over 150 youth between October and December, partnering with various schools. Also, our Safe Kids Program is where we work in the community to install safety car seats, also booster seats from October to December. Also, as part of our Safe Kids Program, we have Safety Town, where we're able to build a small community remotely for children to practice bike safety and pedestrian safety. And so we're able to go out upon request for communities and children to participate in those programs. Next slide, please. In addition to those two programs, we have our SKY, which is our Skills, Knowledge, and Youth Empowerment Program, where we partner with the City of Atlanta. We partner with other schools and recreation facilities where we promote safe choices, also providing additional services like resume building, personal hygiene, fitness, resume writing, trying to just build leadership within young people within Fulton County. Lastly, we have our COVID-19 Health Navigators Program, where we have navigators throughout Fulton County that are providing community-based services, working with organizations for COVID-19 outreach and also to assist with vaccination events. And so as you can see, we've participated in numerous community activities and partnered with over 60 community organizations from October, November, and December, and will continue to do this work where we go out in various municipalities within Fulton County. Next slide. Our maternal and child health services, we offer sleep, safe sleep classes for parents. We also have a hearing, early hearing and detection program where we have a hearing booth that's located at Oak Hill. So for those newborns who have a negative hearing test in the hospital are able to be referred to us to get a secondary hearing assessment and be referred for services. And we also participate in various community-based events and activities. Our Babies Can't Wait Program also helps our medically fragile children, and we continue to partner and allow ourselves to be available for parents and for mothers through our community-based programming. Next slide. And I believe that's it, so are there any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions, I just want to say thank you all for the opportunity for us to be able to come and present a fraction of the things that we do at the Board of Public Health. And I just want to thank my collaborators. I feel like I've been very blessed to be able to work with a very knowledgeable, dedicated, and really passionate team, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manidge?
Yes, sir. As I mentioned, Alton Adams is out on sick leave today. I'm glad to show these charts for purposes of, again, the public. So the clerk, if you'll go to the next chart and then the next chart. Go to the next one, please. As you can see here, excuse me, back up just one, I'm sorry. As you can see here, we have made substantial progress from the start. We're closing in on having resolved 100,000 cases, starting with 149,000 and now at 58,300. You'll go to the next one. Thank you. You can also see, though, that the rate of case dispositions has slowed certainly to about 1,000 to 2,000 a month. That will need to improve over the next 18 months or so to reach these goals, and the team is working on that. Next chart. You'll see that January, if you looked at it again, if you recall, these targets were set, I think, appropriately with a linear, starting with the top, starting with 149,000 and finishing at zero, realizing there would be some month-to-month variance. But January was a slow month for all of the Justice Partner participants. In general, we are ahead, except for in Superior and State Court. And of course, that's where you would begin to see as cases move from one area to the other where the buildup would occur. So it's critical to accelerate that. Hiring is about where it was. If you go to the next chart, please. About where it was, adjustments as we met this week in a review have been made to accommodate this. So in other words, even though there's slow hiring in both Sheriff and Marshall areas because we've reconfigured how we're going to deliver services, those have not impacted the workload, and security's been maintained. Next chart, the, of course, the measure that everyone is focused on, the one most critical, is jail population. As you can see here, this includes all of our locations, including ones where we have loaned out to Cobb County, as well as we are using some of the spare capacity in Alpharetta. But nonetheless, that total number is up now almost 100 over the last couple, three months. The next charts, if you'll go to the next one, just show what we have shown before, detainees by Superior Court Judge, and then some of the drivers, if you'll go to the next chart. And then you'll see dispositions, if you'll go to the next one, by both Superior, and then go to the next chart for state. Now go to the next chart. One of the things that I mentioned was a working group getting together this past week, all the key players with Alton Adams, looking at jail population and reduction. One of the areas that we continue to work is the number of folks that are in the jail unindicted. This is the best data that we have as we sat here today, which simply says there are 1,767 people that are in jail and which have at least one unindicted case. They may have, on the other hand, an indictment against them, but they have at least one case or more that are not indicted, meaning there's still a decision to be made. There's probably estimates, best estimates, 700 to 800 of these folks that are indicted in another case, therefore would remain in jail regardless, but there may be 1,000 that are not indicted. So while the data is a little bit fuzzy, we continue to work this best that we've gotten thus far, and I think we need to remain focused on this. So if you'll go to the next chart, there's a list of potential metrics. I think there's one misspelled word on this chart, perhaps. I don't know what an inducted case is, but indicted and unindicted case trends is what that should say under number two. But we would begin to augment this report with a more robust set of metrics associated with the jail population. And as you recall, from the jail feasibility study, number three, there is a critical one, average length of stay. That has increased 60% since 2016 in our jail. And I do think if you look at the way the numbers work, we have less admissions, significant increase in average length of stay, and then a 35% increase in total population. So benchmarking to national court standards, looking at indictments, and average length of stay, I think will yield a robust conversation for this group going forward, and that is the outcome of that meeting, and something you should expect as we refine this. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I've got a lot of subject matter expertise to answer questions, but I'll certainly try to if there are any.
Okay, just a quick question. When will the consultants be back? I thought, I was expecting them to be here today to finish their presentation.
Yeah, we would plan to have them back at the next meeting-
Next meeting.
-for the jail feasibility questions that were raised.
Okay, and do you have any update on how many inmates are in the Alpharetta jail?
Well, what's on this chart that I just showed, I think it will say 29.
And those are arrested in, up north, or transferred from Rice Street?
No, sir. I'd say, based on my visit up there about two weeks ago, there were two or three from municipal cities, and then the rest were transferred from Rice Street back to Alpharetta.
Yeah, I saw that. All right, Commissioner Barrett, followed by Commissioner Thorne.
I just have a quick question. On the reports that you're planning to include now with adding some of this new data, which I think are a great idea, by the way, so thank you for that, on the unindicted and indicted numbers, will that include, because I think it does keep getting confusing, so it would be nice if it included the fully unindicted and the at least one, and have both of those numbers present on any report we show?
Yes, ma'am. And by the way, to that point, heads up for this board, from meeting with some of the legislative leadership that we've been meeting with on the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, I do think this data that deals with the status of people in jail and also is presented to judges when they're making sentencing decisions is making its way through the legislative process. In other words, getting our act together where the systems are used appropriately and it is used in a way where we can easily collect data, present it to judges, and present it to a body like this one, may in fact find its way into legislation. So we're not going to have an option to continue to find excuses for why we haven't input data effectively. But short answer to your question is yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Commissioner Thorne?
I was just curious of how the targets were calculated, what process went into that?
Yeah, I may not have been very clear. So what we did was just draw a straight linear line, you know, from where we were to where we needed to be, given the time of the project. So what that, you know, gets to is it doesn't allow for a lot of customization to say, "Well, these cases will move faster, these will move slower," therefore we'll set the targets accordingly. But I've run many projects where it's just a linear line, and you explain as you go along why you're behind or ahead. So we have run ahead for some period of time because many of the easy cases we resolved early. Now we're into the more difficult cases, and we may run behind. But the fact of the matter is, we've still got to get to zero if we want to complete this successfully by mid to latter part of 2024.
Okay, just clarifying, there is no simulation model with various factors or anything to get it, just a simple line?
Yep.
All right, any other questions on ORCA?
Thanks, sir. I'm going to ask Ms. Whitmore to review any of the financials she chose, she chooses to do, and then also provide what was requested in terms of information coming out of the 2023 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next slide, please. I'm just briefly, commissioners, on our consolidated COVID response plan, I just wanted to highlight that since our last report to you, we have expended an additional $2.8 million out of those resources. The majority of that came from our court backlog project, and we are continuing to finalize our plans on many of the items that are identified here for uses. For example, the Behavioral Health Crisis Center is coming closer to the point that you will begin to see the budgetary allocation be committed and expenses start to flow against those projects, so we are working on those. But I did just want to highlight since the last report what our change in expenses had been out of our COVID response plan. Next slide, please. This is the cash flow summary that we provide with each report. Next slide, please. With regard to the monthly financial reports, this is the first report for 2023. Next slide, please. We are going to work on making this a little crisper. It's sort of difficult to compress it all into one slide and it be clearly visible, but we will work on that. I did just want to highlight that for the month of January, we ended January with expenses totaling $46.4 million, which represents roughly 5% of the final 2023 budget. That is in line with our previous year's spending pattern on a percent of budget expended basis. Next slide, please. This is just a graphical view. It will be a little clearer as we progress through the year, but this is intended to show you current year's spending compared against the last two years. So as we progress on through the months, you'll actually be able to see the third-year line start to present itself there on the graph. Next slide, please. This report is the summary of funded positions out of the general fund budget, and the item I wanted to highlight on here is at the bottom in the grand total line, all the way to the right. It shows that our vacancy rate through the end of the month of January was roughly 14%. That is slightly below where we ran most of 2023, I mean, 2022, in that in 2022, we ran an average vacancy rate of about 15% to 16%. So we are slightly below where we were in the prior year. And that is it for the monthly financial report. And Hakim, if you'll- The chairman had asked at the last meeting that we summarize the changes that the board had approved at the, in January, when we finalized the budget. And what we have done in this document that you're receiving is to summarize those changes and then just simply to identify what actions are required to effectuate those items, to carry out the intent of the board on allocating the resources, and whether or not there were any impacts associated with that. I would highlight that on the last page, it's a double-sided page, on the last page, we have identified that in our analysis of this, we made the conclusion that any of the funding that was provided for personnel-related or compensation-related transactions would be a recurring expense, meaning something that would be included in the base budget going forward, and anything else would be non-recurring and would not be included in the base budget going forward. So that is what is included on the document that is shared with you currently.
Commissioner Hall, and one of the items colleagues will be discussing in executive session. Commissioner Arrington, you remember you wanted to discuss the personnel in executive session, which we'll do today. Commissioner Hall?
Yeah, so that was interesting, an interesting statement, because if we're going to, if we're going to speak on the personnel issue related to this in executive session, then why are we receiving this not in executive session? Because if you just look at number one, I believe, Commissioner Arrington, that was one of the reasons why you didn't want to have this publicly discussed, is it not?
It is.
Okay, so that's why I'm questioning, why are we receiving this right now and we're not in executive session? Because I was about to make a comment about it, and I read it says executive session discussion, so why is it out here on the floor? So I can't really discuss it, but you brought it to me publicly.
Okay, Commissioner Abdu-Raklin?
I'm going to concur with my colleagues, Commissioner Arrington and Commissioner Hall, because I stated at the last meeting that I felt as though some of these topics here- here, uh, would require an executive session, uh, because it, it puts, it puts us and the public and those entities that we are going to be discussing at, at a somewhat unfair disposition. And, um, I am too trying to figure out why this is being handed. And as I look at it, I do see something that I consider to be not on here, but out of respect to that particular commissioner, I'm not going to say it publicly. I mean, if we're gonna discuss it, we need to discuss everything. But we need to be prudent in the fact that at the end of the day, we serve the constituents, and everything does not require a 10-hour session on the floor, when we need to have some discussions in executive session, or some negotiations behind the scenes for some of the commissioners to either validate why this was very important to them, or to listen to the opposing commissioner as to why we may to, need to look at this stuff differently. And so I would implore that we find a better way to do this to my colleagues, all my colleagues. Because at the end of the day, the budget has been passed, we cannot undo or unring that bell. Do we need to have some conversations? I am so sure that we do need to have some conversations. Do every conversation concerning this require public consumption? No. And so I will ask my colleagues, those that are willing to step to the plate, because only you can answer that question, as to why we need a marathon session to discuss things that we should collaborate before we get to the Board of Commissioners meeting on, and get an understanding as to why or what we're going to do. The executive team is available, we can have a conversation with them, all the commissioners up here are amenable to each other, we're willing to meet with each other, and I just feel like at this point in the process, that's what we should be doing, is resolving issues, advocating either our position, or advocating a maybe change of thought, or whatever behind the scenes, and stop coming to the Board of Commissioners meeting, doing all of this in the public. Some of this does require us to have a conversation with each other before the first and the second Wednesday. And so I don't know what else to say to my colleagues other than, um, the, the citizens are watching us. They're watching how we conduct business, they're watching how we work with each other, and I think it's very, very important that some of this, when I look at this list, some of this requires executive session conversation, and, and something is not on here that should be on here, but out of respect to that commissioner, I'm, I, I'll have that conversation with the commissioner, why their stuff didn't make this list. So at any rate, I would implore that we do better, folks. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I agree with my colleague, Commissioner Rob Zaraman, on, on some of this. I, I think some of these conversations can happen, um, offline or in memos. Um, that said, um, Madam CFO, I really appreciate you putting this list together, because, um, I think I was pretty clear on the budget day, that I was really sort of distressed by the process, and I think the process needs to be, you know, reviewed and potentially really overhauled. And Vice Chair Ellis and I have already met and started, um, having some conversations about what we might, uh, like to see. And one of the things on our list was to talk to you all and see what kinds of things would cause, would have consequences that you're having to deal with. And this is a good start to that list, so I appreciate having it. Um, but I do agree that as a, as a means of, you know, pardon the expression, but as a means of scolding us, it doesn't feel necessary to do that. I think we all know what happened on that day, and we'll all address it in our own ways. Thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Yeah, I think there's sort of two pages to this. I mean, I think we probably could have just got to second page, and that would probably would have been fine. Um, because those are decisions that were made, and then here's what you gotta do to affect them. So we're just all, it's a facts-based thing. Probably could have left off page one with the cover. So, you know, that, that speaks to the whole issue of just, you know, put the facts-based stuff out. Obviously, we got to effectuate those when they come down to, you know, you set a budget, they're gonna come back, a lot of these expenditure items are gonna come back for individual discussion to be voted on and debated, and all that sort of stuff, and fleshed out anyway. That's gonna occur every year, but we probably didn't need this, this cover memo. Uh, and I thought, we, we were, I thought sort of collectively, we were sort of instructive on that, you know, at the prior meeting. So, I mean, obviously it's, you know, I don't think this is a particularly productive use of time to kind of debate process and all that sort of stuff right now. But page two is a good document, appreciate that being, or two and three, appreciate that being shared. Probably could have left off the first page.
Excuse me, Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am, um, looking at page two and three, and I'm, or page two, I'm, I'm trying to determine... I, I, I know what my motion was, and I'm trying to see who took the liberty for the arts funding to give 30% to the library. Who took that liberty? Because that was not part of what was passed by this board.
Commissioner Arrington, during that deliberation about positions, our interpretation was that that funding was for arts and libraries, as it was discussed.
Okay, so let's go back and pull the transcript. I, I, I did, I did not, I never heard anyone say anything about library in that discussion, but I could be wrong.
We'll re-review that, Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you. All right, and so then this second column, the funding activities, is the, the additional amounts that were added?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Commissioner Barrett?
I just have two quick things. Um, one, has this been sent to us digitally?
It has not. I'll follow, I'll follow up with that.
No, please do not. It has executive session information. Please do not.
I just want it emailed, is all I'm saying.
Please do not. It has executive session information.
I'll take that one. You take this front page off and send the other piece.
So, let's do this. Um, there's one item in particular that, on this list, in fact, uh, the first page is what Vice Chair said. Mister, Ms. Whitmore, will you collect this first page, and we'll deal with that one item, because it will be up to me and to the clerk in executive session to determine what we discuss in executive session, because we have to swear, uh, and sign off, uh, on the fact that we, uh, we only dealt with executive session items in executive session. And there's only one item on this list that, uh, to, not to go, we're not gonna deal with that, just a second. Yeah, that page, they're taking up. Yeah, yeah. But we'll monitor that. We're trying, we're trying to be responsive to your request, Commissioner Arrington. All right, Mr. Barrett, you still have a?
I just had one other question, um, but I'll, I'll direct it to, to the county manager, since Madam CFO is otherwise occupied at the moment. Uh, it's just quick. On the ones, on the things on here that are listed as, um, non-competitive award process, is it continued, is continued participation in competitive process allowed? Um, how are you going to answer that question?
I think we'll have to bring that back to the board, um, because it, it could be that you, it's fine to do a non-competitive award and then them participate in the process. It's just a question being raised. I don't think we would decide it. You would have to.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, continue, uh, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. If there are no more questions, that concludes our report.
All right, next item?
Bottom of page fourteen, twenty-three, zero-one-two-eight, External Affairs, Presentation of the 2023 Legislative Session Update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jessica Corby, Director of External Affairs. Um, while the slides are coming up, just wanted to, um, think-
Speak up a little bit, Ms. Corby.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Speak up.
All right, thank you. Let me adjust my microphone. Um, while the slides are coming up, just wanted to thank all of you for your support, um, during this session and your participation. Um, we have had a really good session so far. Still have a lot of work to do, um, but I really appreciate all of you and your support. Um, also wanted to just say, um, it was really good to see Fulton County well represented in, uh, the NICO Legislative Conference this weekend. Um, I'm sorry I had to come back for work at the State Capitol, but, um, a lot of great information there. Next slide, please. Um, just as a reminder for the public, the Board of Commissioners has an adopted set of legislative priorities, and we're gonna go over some of those today. Next slide, please. Um, so the House has, um, passed their amended FY23 budget, um, and on Monday, um, as part of the beginning of the deliberations for the FY24 state budget, the House Appropriations Committee on Human Resources, their subcommittee, rather, um, heard from several state agencies, including the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. This was the first public hearing where our request for the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, um, was heard by the House, and, um, really wanted to thank the Chairman and Vice Chairman for providing testimony in support of our funding. Um, and Commissioner Tanner, uh, Kevin Tanner, who's the new, um, Commissioner of Georgia DBHDD, also, um, spoke in support of our project. So we are very, um, excited to see that moving forward. We have heard good things from our delegation. Um, the full funding for this project to operate one year for the Crisis Center is $13.3 million. This facility would open in the middle of the state's, um, FY24 fiscal year. So where we are today is advocating that the FY24 budget include the six months of funding that would be part of FY24, and that, um, with the understanding that going into FY25, we will need the full 13.3. Um, not to throw more numbers out, but what is actually in the governor's budget right now is 5.6 million. So we need an extra million dollars for six months of funding, and then 13.3 million dollars a year, starting in FY25. Uh, we feel like we have, are on a good track for that. And the Speaker Per Tem has been very supportive, uh, as well as other members of our House delegation. Um, so we look forward to seeing that amendment in the House budget, and then, once it crosses over to the Senate, um, making sure that money stays in the budget. So that's where we are right now. Next slide, please. Uh, we had an opportunity to present to our delegation on February 2nd. Commissioner Thorne was there in person, and I know many of you were on Zoom, um, participating. So thank you for that. Um, there will be a joint meeting tomorrow, um, at four o'clock, and the delegation is hearing from Grady about some of their priorities. Um, and that, they will have their meetings every Thursday. They're alternating, uh, Fulton County and Atlanta delegations in that same space. Um, they've asked for registration elections to come to a future meeting, but haven't set a specific timeframe. Um, also want to mention, although Fulton County is not the organizer, there will be a Fulton County Day tomorrow at the Capitol, and everyone is invited to participate in that. It will include many other, um, partners and agencies, along with, uh, many members of this organization here. Next slide, please. Um, I've already kind of gone over this with the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, so this is really our specific request. Um, what we're looking for is, for six months of funding, 6.6 million dollars, which is an increase of about a million from where we are right now. We're also, um, in doing that, we're making sure that this is the full scope of the facility. Um, what was in the budget was kind of a scaled-down version. Um, so this will really, um, include all of the services we need. And again, we have heard from Commissioner Tanner supporting this model. Next slide. I'm gonna go over this very briefly. Um, we've talked about, uh, we talked a lot about MARTA board appointments. Um, I provided a memo to you all, to your offices yesterday about this. We're exploring this. Um, essentially Fulton County, although, um, although Fulton County Board of Commissioners represents the most people, you make the least number of appointments. And so that's something in the future, um, we've had some conversations with legislators and want to, uh, continue to look at that issue. Next slide, please. But wanted to make sure you know that we are on it. And Commissioner Arrington, I, you and I communicated a bit about that. On our other, um, priorities, wanted to let you know that, um, Representative Bruce has, um, introduced his bill. We've received that draft from Legislative Council. Um, so we're expecting that to be dropped. And there's also a draft, I understand, on a bill that would provide a $5 technology fee for probate court. Um, I saw Cinder Halpern's, uh, draft from Legislative Council on eliminating the renewal period for a very low-income, um, senior homestead exemption, so that bill will be dropped as well. Uh, we are waiting on legislation from Chairwoman Ballinger, on who's the Chair of House Juvenile Justice. Um, that is, we, she has committed to supporting that, and we are expecting that. And again, we're continuing to have conversations with legislators on the property tax appeals issue. Uh, while I am here, though, on this bill, wanted to provide an update, um, and I know Commissioner Barrett stepped out. Um, I may wait till she comes back to give an update on House Bill 30, which is the legislation on antisemitism that was referenced earlier this morning. Um, I think I'll just, I'll come back to this one in just a moment. Um, next slide, please. At your last meeting, the board had some discussion on, um, the topic of fees for Superior Court clerks. And there was legislation introduced, Senate Bill 19. Um, this has been, uh, referred to committee. Um, we're expecting, I believe, a substitute on this bill. Um, but we, it has not yet been passed out of committee. If the board wants to take a position on that, um, we'll ask you in a few minutes if you'd like to take a position on anything. Um, Senate Bill 28 passed out of SLOGO, um, earlier this week. This does, um, look at issues of commissioner salaries, and we'll make sure to circulate that. Um, we've heard different things about that, that legislation, but it did pass out of SLOGO this week. Um, Senate Bill 57 is looking at, um, the issue of, um, bedding, and so we are tracking that. We know the board has, um, expressed some interest in that in the past. Um, and I'm just gonna come back, um, Commissioner Barrett, to House Bill 30, which is not on this printed sheet, but was part of our weekly report last week. House Bill 30 is a bipartisan piece of legislation that, um, defines the language for antisemitism. Um, several members of our delegation, including Representative Panich, Representative Evans, and Representative Bazemore, um, are cosponsors to this bill, along with, um, Majority Leader Astration, and Representative Carson from Cobb County, along with, um, Representative Sharon Cooper. Um, we have heard the media reports about some, um, hate language and materials that were distributed, and obviously, I think this board has, uh, taken strong positions against acts of hatred in the past. So, um, certainly, if that is one of the bills, Commissioner, that you'd like us to take back a position on, we would be glad to do that. Um, and we'll just ask again that the board vote in a few minutes on that. I'm gonna skip ahead to the next slide, please. Um, House Bill 17 is, um, one that we have been tracking specifically. There are several bills on elections. Um, but specifically, um, House Bill 17 has passed out of committee, so we are continuing to track that as well. But specifically, House Bill seventeen has passed out of committee, so we are continuing to track that as well. But several of these are still in committee at this stage. Next slide, please. House Bill thirty-six, wanted to highlight this. This is one that has caused some concern for, specifically for the clerks of Superior Court who handle tax appeal cases. The, by lowering the threshold for taxes require, or appeals requiring a hearing officer, it would create some very significant administrative challenges in terms of the number of hearing officers that would have to be hired, the number of hearings that they would have to run. They have spoken, they, our clerks, as well as the Georgia Clerks Association, have spoken with Representative Martin about their concerns, and they are working on a substitute for that. Again, these others, we are still tracking. They are all in committee, but several issues on taxes, which we see every session. Next slide, please. On this bill, again, several pieces of legislation addressing attorney, DA's and prosecutors. But really wanted to highlight Senate Bill forty-two. I know this Board has taken a very strong position on human trafficking issues. And this bill would really increase the penalties for failure to post the required human trafficking hotline information. That's something I've worked on here, making sure that we have those notices posted in our restrooms and things of that sort. So just wanted to highlight that, because I know that's an interest that this Board has taken on in the past. Next slide. This is a very wonky bill, but it is related to procurement of public works contracts. My understanding is that our public works and purchasing departments do not have any opposition to this, and we are tracking this one. This is also one the ACCG has taken on. Next slide. Want to highlight, House Bill one eighty-nine had, this is related to truck weights on all five-axle commercial trucks. This does not, this is really about traffic on state routes. And ACCG has really opposed this, as does Georgia Municipal Association and Georgia Department of Transportation. Commissioner Barrett's office has asked us to make sure we're tracking this bill. While we were in DC, I had a chance to talk with the ACCG staffer working on this legislation. There was a, you probably saw on the news, a five-hour hearing on this bill last week. But these trucks, the real concern is about safety, and these trucks transporting very heavy materials on state routes and creating a potential safety hazard for motorists who are traveling those same routes. And this would increase, basically more than double the allowable weight on those trucks, which is also, not only creates a safety problem for other motorists, it creates a maintenance problem for those roads. And I think, as an Atlanta resident, I'm very sensitive to potholes already. So I think that is something that, that, again, if the Board wants to take a position on that, please let us know. House Bill sixty-six, this is pretty straightforward, but this is about the, over the summer when we had very high motor fuel and diesel fuel tax suspensions, that would just simply ratify that. And I think that is, that is the last of the ones we've brought forward today. If there are questions on any of these, or again, if the Board would like to take a position on any of these bills, please let us know.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is based on page eleven. SB forty-four. I was trying to find the definition of gang, and I couldn't find it. And it's very important to know what that definition is, because having grown up in Chicago, where there are lots of gangs, have always been lots of gangs and gang activity, there's also been a lot of profiling, and I've seen where it, where that definition in people's minds have been more than two black men standing together in a group in the public. And so I want to make sure that we have a definition of gang that is sufficient to address exactly what this legislation, I believe, is trying to address.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. That's a very important observation. I will take a closer look at that, and we'll get more information and bring that back.
Commissioner Abdu-Rakman?
I'm sorry, did I miss your explanation about the antisemitism?
I did provide an update about the bill, Commissioner. It was House Bill thirty. This is one that has been, it is a bipartisan legislation. It has had a committee hearing. It has not passed out of committee yet. It is intended to provide a definition of antisemitism there. And again, it has three cosponsors within our delegation, Representative Panich, Representative Evans, and Representative Bazemore. Also, John Carson from Cobb County and Majority Leader Chuck Astration from Gwinnett are also cosponsors. And I have a copy. I'll be glad, we would be glad to circulate-
I think this is the copy that you-
Okay, I didn't realize-
Okay, I just wanted to confirm it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I mean, I think I made this clear by my active nodding of my head, but yes, I would like us to take a position on it, which, of course, we're going to talk about later in this meeting as well. I think it might be helpful, I know you keep, you sort of keep saying that it's to define antisemitism, but I think it's also, what is the point of that? The point is to define antisemitism so that hate crimes based on antisemitism don't fall through the cracks, which happens currently. So that's really what it's aimed at, and that's why it's critically important.
Thank you, Commissioner Barrett. Yes, and so I don't know if you'd like to take a position now, or if you want to vote on positions on any of these, please let us know. If you, or if you'd like to do that later, I know you have another agenda item.
Commissioner Thorne?
Thank you, Chair. You say that the Registration and Elections Department is going to be presenting at an upcoming meeting. What will they be presenting or advocating for?
Commissioner Thorne, this was really just commenting that, at the meeting that you and I attended a couple of weeks ago, some of the delegation members expressed that they would be interested in having them, but we've received no further information.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure.
Excuse me, Vice Chair Ellis? Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair. So I'm in support of the antisemitism thing, antisemitism bill. But it really reminds me, or takes me back to Commissioner Hall's comment a moment ago. We're seeing police officers act as gangs. I would love to see a similar bill for blacks and young blacks, and those being assaulted by police. Obviously, I know that's not what we're here for today, but to me, those two things parallel each other. Certainly, we need to stop antisemitism, but we also need to stop the killing of young black males. And I don't know how we address one without addressing the other. It seems to be a glaring mistake not to do both.
Thank you, Commissioner Arrington, for that comment. I would like for our office today to go back and pull the previous hate crime legislation and any definitions that are in that, and provide that to you all for review. I hear you loud and clear, and I understand, I believe, what you are trying to address. That would, that's the existing law that this would append to, essentially. And so I think what I hear you saying is, are the definitions in that legislation strong enough for other kinds of hate crimes that are occurring?
Thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Mr. Chair, since I had mentioned this earlier when we were setting the agenda, since we're on these things, and typically, a lot of times, we might wind up voting to, you know, send a message on this, that, or the other kind of thing. Since we have two items that are actually on the agenda in their form of resolution, I'd request that we reconsider the agenda and just take these up, and both them up or down, you know, right now. And as a Commissioner Barrett's item, and then my item, which is oh-one-three-four, relating to the passport fees.
All right, there's a motion before us to amend the agenda. Let's vote on, properly moved and seconded, to amend the agenda to take up two items that relate to the legislative package. Please vote. Is it a motion? Motion to amend by Commissioner Ellis. It's seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please vote.
And the vote is open to amend the agenda? And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, sound the first one. It doesn't matter.
Okay, the add-on item, twenty-three dash zero, one, four, one. Request approval of a resolution by the Fulton County Board of Commissioners against antisemitism, supporting legislation that clearly defines the meaning of antisemitism under state law and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Barrett.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Vice Chair Ellis. Questions and comments?
I have a quick question. On the, on, you said we need to take a vote for the, for the, for you to take a position on a particular-
It sounds to me, Commissioner, I haven't read your resolution, but it sounds like-
Okay, so this does qualify, is that, okay, perfect.
I believe that that gives us the direction we need.
Yes, agreed. I just didn't know if that was, if that worked in concert.
Yes, I think-
Commissioner Arrington, were you trying to amend this one, or you want to separate?
I was not trying to amend this one. I'm, I think both issues are pressing, and both issues need to be addressed, but I was not trying to amend this one.
All right.
I just think there needs to be a second one.
Okay. Commissioner Abdu-Rakman?
I agree. I believe, Commissioner Arrington, we can do both. So maybe our county attorney, I would invite, to have a conversation to see how it needs to be written up. But I agree with what Commissioner Arrington is saying, and I don't think there's a reason that we cannot do both. But I also know that, given the climate that we have today, a lot of times, individuals' personal thoughts and ideals make us feel as though we got to choose one or the other. And I think this body, I can't, even though I can't speak for this body, but I think this body would be in support of both of these things. So county attorney, if you could, please let us know how that needs to be written, so we can go on record and lobby. I don't know if we will be able to get it through this session, given the time and date, but it is something that we seriously need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Barrett?
I just wanted to speak on this issue very quickly before we vote, just to say, as a Jewish citizen of Fulton County for many, many years, this is something that the state legislature has failed to get through on several occasions. And, you know, not only given the most recent, you know, vandalism that occurred related to antisemitism, but also, and it's stated here in this resolution, the state of Georgia has seen an increase of a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-three percent in antisemitic incidents in twenty twenty, twenty-one compared to twenty twenty. The numbers are going up. The rhetoric is going up, and it is dangerous. And for people who don't really understand why this needs to be a separate item, you know, being Jewish is, the categories that are covered in the current law are race, nationality, and country of origin. And being Jewish is sort of a weird conglomerate of those things and others, cultural heritage, et cetera. For myself personally, I don't practice the religion. I was born Jewish, and I am Jewish by birth. But I don't, it's not a religion for me. I don't, I'm not from Israel, so it's not a country of origin for me. And, you know, it's not, when you fill out a race form, you don't get to choose Jewish on there. So it doesn't really fall into any of those categories, and that's why this is so critically important, because oftentimes, when we, you know, give the smell test to a crime, we understand that it is antisemitic and a hate crime. But because of what's worded on, on, you know, a note or on social media, or whatever the case may be, it's often written off as political and not treated the same way that a hate crime is treated. And that is why this is so critically important. So I just wanted to make that really clear, and I want to thank my fellow commissioners for supporting this, and I want to thank you for your future work on this.
All right, other comments? If not, the motion on the floor is to approve. Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes unanimously.
Next item?
On page sixteen, under Commissioners' Action Items, twenty-three, zero, one, three, four. Request approval of a resolution urging the General Assembly to amend state law to prohibit the personal retention of passport execution fees as personal compensation for Superior Court clerks, and to provide that such fees shall instead be remitted to a county's general fund and for other purposes, sponsored by Vice Chair Ellis and Commissioner Thorne.
All right, the motion on the floor is to approve by Commissioner Hall. It is- No, we get it on. All right, let's do this. Let's, let's do this. All right. Commissioner Ellis, if you would withdraw your second, and you ready now?
There it is.
Okay, guys, let's go, let's go. All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Vice Chair Ellis?
Yeah, just real briefly, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting on this, so not lucky to belabor it. But this, this was revised from last time to take all reference out to any sort of denouncing, as well as any reference to our individual clerk, and just speaks to seeking a change in state law specific to this particular practice statewide, and have those funds then be reverted just for use of county general fund purposes. That's, that's the way it reads now.
Commissioner Barrett?
I just wanted to say thank you, Vice Chair Ellis, for listening to the comments that I think several of us brought up, myself included, at the last meeting, and taking that into consideration. I do think this is a very important thing to move through, and I appreciate your attention to that.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you look at page three, line fifty-eight, it says disapproves, and I thought that that was one of the words that Commissioner Arrington had asked to be changed, so that it didn't, it didn't seem, I'm sorry, it was a word, practice? Oh, practice is still in there, too. So anyway, I thought there was supposed to be SB nineteen, which does this as well. Is that correct, Jessica?
SB nineteen is the proposed legislation addressing this issue.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
SB nineteen is the bill that would address the passport fees collected by clerks of Superior Court. That's correct.
Okay, and we're actively tracking that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Arrington?
I also want to thank Commissioner Ellis for taking out the denunciation and personal language. I think this is a bigger issue with all state constitutional officers that needs to be addressed. I don't understand why any person working on behalf of the county as a subdivision of the state would be allowed to get extra personal compensation. I wonder, Commissioner Ellis, could, could we amend to say, I mean, I think this should apply to any state constitutional officer that's doing this, not, not just clerks, anyone, all right? But, you know, I am very appreciative that you took out the personal language.
Commissioner Arrington, if I may, you know, I guess, since we don't necessarily know what the other items may be, if they are in practice, this is just sort of known, right? So it's just really more urging the state to act on it. So it's just really more urging the state to act on it. Maybe you and I could work together and try to codify something, you know, kind of similar for the other, other matters.
That's, that's fine.
Okay.
All right, anyone else? All right, the motion on the floor is to approve. Let's vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, one abstention.
All right, back to the regular agenda.
Thank you.
Page 15, 23-0129, purchasing and contract compliance, request approval of a resolution to extend emergency purchasing authority of the chairman and county manager for COVID-19 related purchases.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, it's seconded by Commissioner Hall. Please, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hall, you have the floor.
Okay, hold on one second, let me get back to that one. Okay. President Biden's administration, it set the expiration date for the national emergency to expire at the end of the day on May 11th, 2023, and they said, and we can transition away from the emergency phase, meaning that this will be the last, and there will be no other extensions beyond May 11th, 2023. So I wanted to ask for a friendly amendment to this legislation, this resolution on page one, line 17, where it says until April 11th, 2023. That's actually incorrect. Based on the Biden administration's information, it should be May 11th, 2023. But also on page two, since it is very clear by Biden's administration that they will not be extending this beyond May 11th, that we put, make a correction on page two, line 20, to say May 11th, 2023 as well.
All right, any objections? No objections, okay. Just a minute. Commissioner Obdo Rockland and Vice Chair Ellis?
I would like to ask the county manager to weigh in on this, only because I want to make sure my understanding of if we change it, how will it affect certain things that you have to move on? That's, that's my only concern. I, I support Biden, I am a Democrat, but I, I don't know that federally, if this would help or hurt us on the local side. So I just want to, I just want to make sure, and, and if you can weigh in, I'm gonna tell you what I don't want to do. I, I don't want something that may or may not, depending on interpretation, be COVID-related or emergency-related as a result of COVID, because that's two different things in my mind. And to hamper what you need to do or require you to come back in front of this board, that is my concern. And so if you could answer that for me, please, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. I, I think ending it concurrently with the Biden administration's date makes sense. That's what we've been saying, I think, all along. I don't anticipate anything that, because most of the activities that were so intensive back at the early stages of the pandemic have passed, where we had to procure PPE and only a supplier presented themselves in a certain period of time for an order to be placed or for vaccination supplies, things, all those sorts of things have pretty much been resolved. And going forward, we still have monies to expend, but they're principally in ORCA and a few other things that are more routine, and I don't see why for consistency we would not bringing, would not be bringing them back to the board. So I don't see a problem with this unless the county attorney does, and I don't think that she would.
So it won't tie your hands, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Ellis?
Yeah, that was generally a question I was gonna ask, but also, I guess, sort of irrespective, I guess, of whether it's April or May or whenever, we've been, as a practice, been doing this every month, right? So all this one's doing is just extend it for another month, what we've historically been doing. So what do y'all prefer? What's the best approach for me?
I think making the date coincide with the end of the federal state of emergency makes sense, especially since many of the same emergency powers already exist in our purchasing code for general emergencies. This was specifically for the purpose of adding, emphasizing that there is flexibility so that we don't lose opportunities related to the pandemic. But ending this emergency procurement does not eliminate all emergency ability to, to ratify contracts or to enter into contracts.
Right, I guess, that really wasn't my question, I guess, is this, I mean, you're, Commissioner, you were talking about changing line 17, correct?
Yes, line 17 says April 11th, 2023 right now, and I was saying change it to the Biden administration's date of May 11th. And on page two, line 20, it says March 15th, and changing that to May 11th as well.
So, so effectively what we're doing, we're not gonna be bringing this back month to month? Is that what we want to do? I guess that's, that's really what.
Well, we initially established it based on the president authorizing a national emergency, and then the governor authorized a national emergency, and we based ours based on the president's dates, and so that's what I'm going by. That's why it's in here.
But I think we're sort of saying the same thing, but we've been, it's a practical matter, even though it's been further out, we've been bringing it back to our body on a monthly basis. So are we saying we don't want to bring that back?
So we get to save some trees?
I mean, that's, that's, if we make that change...
And we get to save some man time, man hours, woman hours.
If the board is inclined to have the end date of this legislation coincide with the Biden administration sunsetting their emergency order, then yes, it makes sense to change that.
So I guess in, in theory, too, then if that were to be changed or something, we'd just come back with a different resolution, if the Biden administration changes the date again?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
All right, Commissioner Barrett?
I just had a really quick question for the county manager. How much have we used this in the last three or four months? If at all?
We've still used it very infrequently, not as frequently as we used it when the initial pandemic.
And for what kind of items have we needed to use it for recently?
Like on this one, it's for the ankle monitoring for Project Orca. Most of these have been Project Orca-related.
I guess I'm wondering why that would be an emergency, though?
At the time, when we were trying to get, get a lot of inmates moved out of the jail because of COVID and the closeness, that was one of the things that was utilized to help with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve. Let's vote. As amended.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes unanimously.
Next item.
23-0130, finance, request approval of a recommended proposal in an amount not to exceed $269,743 to provide professional healthcare benefit consulting services.
All right, motion to approve by Vice Chair Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Any questions? Please vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
All right, let's take this next item and we'll recess.
Okay, this item 23-0086, human resources as amended, request approval of a resolution authorizing the Fulton County Sheriff to offer above the minimum salaries, authorizing 5% pay-based rate increase for certain employees of Fulton County Sheriff, directing an amendment to the overtime and compensatory time personnel policy, authorizing increased overtime pay and for other purposes.
Okay, Commissioner Hall, followed by Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. So it's a lot of amendments in here, but, um, one that still sticks out, we were supposed to remove all language involving a cola, but on page one of the revised resolution, there's still a line that mentions the cola, and that's 11 and 12. I didn't see it anywhere else. It looks like everywhere else it was removed.
Commissioner, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, commissioners. Kenan Harmon, Chief HR Officer. In developing this resolution with the county attorney's office to provide some kind of historical perspective, that's why we included that language as to what action the board has already taken in 2022 relative to a cola. So that's the only place you see the cola reference in this new resolution.
Well, I'm glad you said that, because that being said, it leads me to my next question of, you know, we've been through this so many times over the years as it relates to other elected officials who are elected to serve Fulton County in other capacities other than commissioners, and the fact that they have a budget that is their own to be managed by them, and that once we approve their budget and they receive the funding, they can, with the help of hopefully the county attorney's office, the purchasing director, and whoever else, finance, can do with their budget whatever they want to do with their budget, the same way that commissioners are able to utilize our office budgets for what we need within the confines of legal and ethical policies. So I'm, I'm trying to understand why the sheriff would need a resolution to give his employees salary increases.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
If I made point of order, this is, this should be in executive session.
I know, but Commissioner Arrington... I know.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. This is an executive, this is executive session. This is an executive session item, and we should not have a discussion here.
I agree. It shouldn't even be a resolution, because if we want to give our employees a raise, we just do it.
Just, Commissioner Hall, hold on, we'll take it up in executive session.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, that being said, it's 1:23. I'll entertain a motion to recess for lunch in the executive session. We'll entertain items of real estate, litigation, and personnel. What? Yeah?
There's, there's motion in here already.
All right, those in favor, and I oppose, no, thank you.
Go into executive session, I...
Go into executive session. I...
All right, without objection, we will resume the regular order of business. Items from executive session, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Chairman. Is there a motion to approve the requests for representation set forth in items number one and two of the executive session agenda?
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously.
Is there a motion to approve settlement in the matter of St. Joseph's Hospital of Atlanta versus Fulton County and the city of Sandy Springs in the amount of $260,505.83?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve settlement in the matter of DCRC complaint number 22-651 in the amount of $7,133.33?
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Is there a motion to approve settlement in the matter of Philip Tramp and Devon Van Beek regarding 768 Belt Loop in the amount of $5,179.89?
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman.
The vote is open.
Regarding item number five of the executive session agenda.
And the vote passes seven unanimously.
And is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the Board of Registration and Elections to appoint Nadine Williams as the Director of Elections at an annual salary of $185,000 effective February 15, 2023?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, two, five yeas, two nays.
Next item.
No further action items.
All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
Back on page 15, 23-0086, Human Resources Management. Request approval of a resolution authorizing the Fulton County Sheriff to offer above minimum salaries, authorizing 5% base pay rate increase for certain employees of the Fulton County Sheriff, directing an amendment to the overtime and compensatory time personnel policy, and authorizing increased overtime pay and for other purposes.
Right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, that's seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, Commissioner Arrington, followed by Commissioner Barrett. Oh, before, all right. Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, before your vote, may I just clarify one point of clarification? Good afternoon again. On page three, line five, we inadvertently left off the crime suppression unit, so we just want to make sure that's on the record, that they'll be inserted in that specific whereas clause. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Herman or Madam CFO, in the legislation that is before us, it says a cost of living adjustment or COLA, but it's really a salary increase, is that correct?
That's correct, Commissioner. The only reference to COLA is just for the, in the whereas clause for a historical perspective.
So it's not a COLA, it's a salary increase?
It's a salary rate adjustment, yes.
And the motion passes, six yeas, one nay.
Next item.
Next item is on the add-on memo, registration elections. 23-0088, request approval of statewide contract in an amount not to exceed $304,619.52 to provide temporary staffing services.
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman. Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Thorne. That's an add-on you're taking now, is that what you?
It's an item.
That's the one that was left off?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, Commissioner Hall. Who? Who's not here? All right, Commissioner Thorne.
We don't have any, who's going to answer questions?
My suggestion is, is that this item be held. We got questions from the moving company, the alternative to using staffing, as late as this morning. It's not clear in the moving company bid if they would do all of the activities that would be required. And you've already approved enterprise rent-a-trucks for this move, so that's another complicating factor. So I think it should be held. I don't think that'll create any problem, based on talking to Mr. Davis, and we'll bring it back next meeting with a clear side-by-side comparison between the two approaches.
All right, without objection, we'll hold. Continue.
On page 15, 23-0131, Senior Services, request approval to amend a memorandum of understanding for the provision of financial support in the amount of $500,000 to provide life enrichment, fitness, and congregate dining services for the senior population of Fulton County.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Next item.
Six with Commissioner Arrington. 23-0132, Public Works, request approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District for continued participation in the district-wide single-family residential toilet retrofit program in the amount, in the total amount of $25,000 for one year.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. On page 16, 23-0133, request approval of a memorandum of agreement for continued participation in the district-wide multifamily high-efficiency toilet rebate program.
All right, a favorable motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays. Six with Vice Chair Ellis. 23-0050, Juvenile Court, as amended, request approval of a statewide contract for website system development services in an amount not to exceed $115,000.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Hall, that's seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman. Commissioner Thorne?
Yeah, hi there. I just had some questions about, you're striking out the maintenance, to provide ongoing maintenance, troubleshooting. As with any website, you're going to have troubleshooting and maintenance you're going to need. So that cost will be, how will that cost be supplied to maintain the website?
The maintenance costs will be on the AML list, but it'll still be annual costs associated. The $115 is just for the creation of the website.
And then do you know what that cost will be?
It's roughly around $3,000 a year.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Barrett?
This is a change from, a little bit of a change from what you guys presented last time, correct? What were the differences?
We changed the language to fit the, to fit the scope of the project. So it was originally entered as a marketing, or there was some language about marketing, but we wanted to make sure we expressed that it's about automating our processes and being able to increase our efficiency for those processes that come through the court manually.
The only other question I have is, this is a custom system being built for you. And so my question would be, are there existing software packages that would work? Is there a reason why we have to do this as a custom project?
So it's custom to us as far as the website portion. We have, we use a statewide case management system, which is called JCATS. And so this will build that portal between making those forms electronic and moving it over directly into our case management system, which is the statewide system, which is called JCATS.
Okay, and just for clarification on Commissioner Thorne's question, how, again, where is the budget for the maintenance? Is that just built into existing software maintenance?
It's built into existing costs from our current website, it'll just move over, yes.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad to see the changes because it makes it more clear that this is actually an application specific for your court system. And then, and then there's just simply a web GUI interface so that people can log in via the internet to access the data that's in the application. And I was very impressed because I've always seen these IT projects that involve the web. And I'm always saying to people, you also need to make sure that this works across every platform, from your tablet PC to your desktop and your phone. And I saw that on page 219, you have even the little picture, so it makes, as clear as day, that you're focusing on making sure that people can pull this up on any device and use it adequately, and they can see it adequately. So I applaud you on that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, let's vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Under Commissioners' Action Items, 23-0135, request approval of resolution repealing resolution 22-0995 and reaffirming Fulton County's participation in the Princeton Lakes Eastside TADs as previously authorized by resolution 02-1414 and resolution 03-1465 and for other purposes sponsored by Commissioners Hall and Barrett.
All right, sir, you have the floor. There's a motion on the floor to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Samir Dlahey, Director of Select Fulton, Economic Development and Workforce Arm of Fulton County Government. I just wanted to provide a quick snapshot, I know the discussion is around both the Princeton Lake and Eastside TAD. I think there's some confirmation on the Princeton Lakes TAD, but we got some new data on the Eastside TAD that I wanted to share from Atlanta this week, as well as some additional thoughts on discussions to better understand, I think, and recognize our investments in these TADs. If you guys can pull up, just, I have a quick two slides. And I'll go through it here just briefly. Just looking at the background of the Eastside TAD, so far we've contributed, I'm sorry, so far the Eastside TAD has been funded with $262 million in increment funding to the Eastside TAD. That represents over a 300% growth in the tax base there in the TAD since 2004, when the TAD was originally created. $64 million of the $262 million was provided by Fulton County, so we cover about 25% of that cost load. As of this year, we're contributing about $6.5 million annually. That number will just steadily increase as the valuations in the TAD increases, with the expected closure date of 2028. One thing to note is, as of July 2022, the Atlanta public school system is no longer, how do I characterize that? They're still participating in the TAD, but receiving 100% pilot payments for their payments into the TAD. So essentially, they're paying into the TAD, but the money gets cut back right to them. So that'll shift our balance from funding 25% of the TAD to about 50%, sharing that equal weight with the city since the school system pulled out. Just in our quick analysis of the data we got from Invest Atlanta here Monday, for the Eastside TAD, they have about $97.5 million in current obligations. Those are, those are projects already approved by the Board of Invest Atlanta. About $10 million of that, $97 million, has actually been dispersed to those projects. And just as of note, about $41.5 million, so just shy of half of that, is going to the acquisition of the Two Petri Center building. They also provided another list of about $64 million in the pipeline, so these are expected projects that would come in front of the Invest Atlanta Board, but have not already been committed for funding. And that leaves them, given their current fund balance of over $120 million, in excess of about $46 million. million dollars, in excess of about forty-six million dollars over their current fund balance. Next slide, please.
How do we get a pilot payment and get our money back?
It was a part of the renegotiation with APS and the city over the Golch and the Westside TAD. And so as a part of that agreement, they've shifted some of their commitments away from some TADs and towards some other TADs. So one of the ones they've shifted away from was Eastside.
Were we a party to that agreement?
No, it's a, it's a omnibus agreement, I think, between the Atlanta Public School System and the City of Atlanta.
Well, wait now, how, how are we affected? How, how, why would we have to increase our participation from twenty-five to fifty percent based on an agreement that was made between two parties and we weren't at the table?
Well, our commitment is for our portion of the millage rate for the years the TAD is open. It doesn't change if one of the partners decides to pull funding out.
Okay.
Now, and again, they haven't technically pulled the funding out. They're still funding the TAD. Their funds still go to Invest Atlanta, but the check for that funding is written back to the school system as of July two thousand and twenty-two. So that's why I'm saying going forward, the Eastside TAD will get less money. They'll get about half as much they were getting before, and that's why our share kind of increases because APS is pulling out, or has pulled out.
But the dollar amount is still, the dollar amount of the contribution is still the same?
Our contribution, correct, yeah. So they were probably getting twenty-five million dollars. Now they're only getting maybe thirteen million dollars for the Eastside TAD.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
And again, reviewing some of this data, and as you've seen, this has been, I think, a healthy exercise to kind of review and have an analysis and understanding of the tax allocation districts and, and the funding commitments. I know a lot of it's been talked about in Invest Atlanta, but this is a holistic look. We, we've participated in funds in Eastside, I'm sorry, East Point, Hapeville, College Park, and others. So I think some of the challenges we've learned is, is we really don't have a good grasp and understanding of the TADs, especially their use of funds, and more importantly, I think, those future commitments, which we're kind of getting asked a lot. In addition, trying to position what those future commitments would look like, it's very hard to look at the originating redevelopment plans that created these TADs to understand what are those specific projects that would be funded and the amount of funding that would be needed. It's somewhat misaligned with what we see in terms of the actual outcome. So we have some redevelopment plans that say only fifty million dollars in increment was supposed to be raised, when we see the TAD has actually raised over fifty million dollars. And same with kind of linking those projects, the projects in the redevelopment plan with actually those occurring on the ground. So I think in that spirit, the opportunity, I think it was mentioned at the last Board of Commissioner meetings, is just around better routine and standardized reporting to both the BOC and staff. I know particularly in the case of Invest Atlanta, we've had a board member sit over there and provide kind of reports at the end of these agendas. I, I think there's a better opportunity for both board members and staff to get a little bit more in the weeds on that. Again, more projecting of where those use of funds are going. To Commissioner Arrington's point about APS, just formalize the notification if funding partners decide to change. We learned this about the Eastside TAD. We made an inquiry to East Point. They closed their first TAD last year. Nobody told us until we kind of acknowledged it. So now they're remitting the balance of what's in the East Point TAD back to us. I tried to get a finder's fee from McKean, but he wouldn't let me get that. But again, we're going to get remitted to some of those funds. Over a million, one point?
I, I think what they indicated was about one-point-six million is what would be returned, and it was a little under a million dollars in annual increment from the county.
I think there's also an opportunity, especially on the reporting side of things, is just to have greater visibility of Fulton County's partnership to fund these projects. Not only, again, useful for staff to see that, but I think for the Board of Commissioners to just see the, the funds that, that they've committed to these TADs having impact on the ground. Again, sharing with our cities since we're co-investing with the cities that are directing these dollars. And then ultimately, again, trying to get a sense from each of the TADs that we participate in, what is this, what does it mean when the goals of the TADs are met? I think it's been a very broad-brush term. Obviously, it's up to each municipality to determine when the goals have been met. Those are not very quantitative, those are not number-based, it's more qualitative, is the area turned around? And so I think that's part of our challenge is, again, how do we summarize, what is our future obligations across all TADs, and what does that funding commitment look like? I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right, Vice Chair Ellis.
Thanks for that updated information. And I think it's been, well, you know, certainly we had some, you know, heated discussion around it, or, you know, warm discussion around kind of this topic. I think it was a good discussion that we kind of do need to have because we, we were at, probably not all operating with sort of a great sense of information of where all these different sort of TADs stood, right? And we really needed to sort of get arms around it because there's a lot of real money flowing into it, this taxpayer money, roughly, you know, just a hundred-and-seventy-nine million alone in the Atlanta TAD. So significant funds, right? So I think we all need to have a good understanding of that. I did want to confirm, since we, this original resolution, which we're going to talk about, really dealt with sort of the two, two specific TADs that we were seeking information on, Princeton's Lakes and the Eastside. It seems like on the information that we received from relative to the Princeton Lakes TAD, that Invest Atlanta has confirmed that, you know, all funds necessary there to meet obligations, and there is no need for us to continue to pay in increment. Is that?
Correct, and they're planning to close it this year.
They're planning on closing it this year. So I, I'm not really quite sure, as respects that one, why we would want to really undo anything, because there's not really, Invest Atlanta's told us they're closing it, so there wouldn't be a need to continue to pay in increment this, this year. So, you know, for, as we consider this one at a minimum, I hope, you know, we would remove reference to Princeton Lakes, you know, in this particular one, since we've already got verification that it's closing. It seemed to be foolish for us to continue to drop, you know, an increment in there when it's no longer needed. The information that they provided back to us. Well, I wonder what's, going back to the original one that she provided, you've got it there, I think, right? Where she describes, you know?
It's a February third letter that we received.
Yeah. See if I've got it. But so anyway, that one specifically, I just, you know, seems like we're all, we asked for information relative to it. They confirmed that there's no other obligations there. They're closing it, so I don't see why we should continue to pay, you know, wouldn't make sense for us to continue to pay in increment. It seems like they're in agreement on that for Princeton Lakes. You know, as respects the Eastside TAD, you know, I think, well, obviously, when you looked at some of the numbers that were originally provided about the funds they had on hand, and then our knowledge of projects they had in the pipeline, it was the appearance that there was adequate funding here, right? And so just like, you know, APS was looking at, you know, hey, you know, we need to start looking at pilot payments and all that. So I think this was a reasonable conversation for us to begin to have. I think we've got, you know, now got a lot of information from them, and I think in the spirit of kind of what our resolutions ask was, really in terms of trying to understand what the redevelopment obligations are, we've got sort of the hard stuff, and then we've got the stuff that obviously they have been evaluating midstream, right? And I think they brought that to us sort of in good faith, and I'm glad that we should recognize that. And I don't think we should discontinue our payment of increment into the Eastside TAD based upon the information that they've, they provided to us. And I think they've met really kind of the spirit of the resolution for what we're asking for. But I think holistically, we need to, you know, continue to kind of get more information on the TADs as a whole, and, you know, look at, you know, have an understanding of when these things expire, what their true funding needs are, whether or not some of the stuff that APS engaged in and looked at in terms of pilot payments on specific TADs, whether that's the type of thing that we should be considering in light of the funding needs that we've got at the county. So I think, you know, we could just sort of, you know, toss in the trash, try to get information and try to understand kind of, you know, a better picture of this so that, you know, we're, we're best positioned to think about all the tax money that's flowing around so that we, we've got, you know, kind of the things that are coming to us to help meet the, the real needs that we have, to provide the services for all Fulton County citizens. You know, or, you know, we could kind of take a, take, take a step back and say, okay, you know, let's look at these sort of individually. Did they meet the spirit of the original resolution? And just affirm that we're going to continue to pay the increment into the Eastside TAD. And, you know, we won't pay the increment for Princeton Lakes because they've verified that they don't need it. So I, I mean, I think really, based upon the last information that we've been provided, you know, I think they've met the spirit of what the resolution was, and we've got, you know, a fairly clear distinction on, on both, on both TADs. And in turn, this, this, you know, this particular resolution's not needed, and we could instruct our manager, you know, to write a letter accordingly regarding disposition of one and, and continuance in the other.
Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The TADs are not complete and the objectives have not been met. Oh, let me raise that up since it's so hard to hear me. The TADs are not complete and the objectives have not been met. That's a direct quote from Eloisa Clemente. Thank God for cell phones and text messages and Zoom and, and Mr. Chair, I guess people do actually watch this on FGTV after all, more than you think. So we have a lot of people who are watching right now who do not agree with what was just being said. And so I would move forward with the approval. Thank you, Commissioner Abdur-Raqman, for your motion to approve, because this is needed. And if we need to address the individual TADs by project, then, then we should do that absolutely. But Princeton's Lake, Princeton Lakes is going to be deemed complete at some point, but not immediately right now. And thank you, Mr. A.J. Robinson, for your input as well.
Commissioner Thorne?
So I just wanted to get on an elementary level for the audience. So we go into a TAD to redevelop an area, and they submit a plan, correct, on how this blighted area by giving in this tax allocation that we could be using for other stuff to redevelop that area. So they come in with a plan, correct?
Right, a redevelopment plan creates the TAD.
Has Princeton Lakes and the Eastside TAD exceeded their redevelopment plan? The original one that they submitted?
Well, so there's two buckets, let's say. There's, there's a bucket of project and, I'm sorry, a bucket of projects and efforts, but those are broad-brush. It includes infrastructure improvement, commercial redevelopment, but they're not well-defined. It's not, we are going to fix three buildings and thus admit the goals of the TAD. I think similarly on the financial side, there is a estimation of what the potential collections of increment would be over that period, so that whatever city is activating on that TAD has some sense of, we will expect to generate a hundred million dollars and thus can go issue bonds to do the projects described in the redevelopment plan. But the TAD is not required to meet the same number as what's in the redevelopment plan. And again, that's part of the challenge is, the projects and the funding amount requested in the redevelopment plan is not aligned with what we see actually occurring. I'm not saying it has to be, it just, it makes it hard for us to interpret how much further that TAD needs to go to meet those broad-brush redevelopment goals.
But the whole intent of entering the TAD is so that the property that is blighted will have value and have a revenant, generate a tax base. And in one of the TADs, they have a three-hundred percent growth rate, is that correct?
In, in the Eastside TAD, if you took the base of when they started the TAD to where it is now, it's three-hundred percent.
And the other one's over a hundred percent, correct?
There's several others, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and there's no, they don't have any outstanding bond debt?
I, I'm not clear at this point. On the other ones, we've only asked for the, for the two from Invest Atlanta.
Yeah, just for the two, I'm just talking about the two.
I'm sorry, yeah, correct.
So, for instance, if we pull out of these TADs, is the property, the intent is so that the property has this tax base. The intent is so that we convert blighted property into very good, a very good tax base again. If we pull out, will the Princeton Lakes and the Eastside TAD go back to blighted property?
Go backwards, you mean?
Mm-hmm.
Couldn't make assessment as to whether it would go back. I think it's more of the spirit of what Commissioner Hall was saying, is the city feels it needs that additional funding to meet its defined goals of the redevelopment plan.
But we don't know, those, those redevelopment plan, with infrastructure, it could go on forever and ever. You could just keep putting stuff in the pipeline, correct?
You could, but our commitment is, is up to a period. So up for this one, up to two thousand and twenty-eight, and that's when our funding commitment would end. However much is incremented from now until two thousand and twenty-eight would be theirs to invest in the TAD.
Okay, so we always go on a year, not an amount, when we enter a TAD?
Yeah, there's, for, for, I mean, I think pretty much all the agreements, it's all based on that time period unless of a certain financial cap or, or the like. I think there's one for the Belt Line maybe, but for most of them, it's, it's very short resolutions that just say we will pledge our funds until the TAD expires.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
Just to be clear, Commissioner Thorne, the amount that we pay is, the way it works is when we agree to get into it, we know how much tax we're getting from that area. We freeze the tax at that level, and it's only the increment. So if it doesn't improve, then there's no increment. So they get paid based on how well they do, essentially. And we keep that original tax base until it closes, and then we recoup, you know, then we start to get that, all of that tax money back. So there's a long-term benefit to the county that can be pretty dramatic, depending on how well the TAD performs. I just, I-
But we could get that now, that three-hundred, if it's grown three-hundred percent over the hundred percent.
Well, but I, I will say, there is still work to be done. I've heard from a lot of constituents who feel very strongly that the Eastside TAD needs to continue. And that, whether it continues is really not a question, it's whether or not we continue to fund or allow it to be funded, which I strongly believe that it should be. I, I feel like, you know, Commissioner Hall and I are in full agreement on this, and Commissioner Ellis also, who originally proposed pulling out of that, or withdrawing our funds from that TAD, seems to be fine with the responses that we continue with the Eastside TAD. So I'm going to direct my questions to the Princeton Lakes TAD. That is scheduled to wrap up at the end of this year, correct?
Uh, yeah, the, the letter we got back says anticipates closing the TAD during two thousand and twenty-three, so I'm not sure.
Yeah, so well, it's an end, but at some point. So how often do we make a payment into that? Do we know what the payment schedule is?
The Tax Commissioner's Office remits the payments as they're received.
So it's like after the taxes are collected, we make a payment, sort of?
Yes, as the tax commissioner collects, then he remits. We get a, a weekly remittance from the Tax Commissioner's Office while he's collecting, so I would imagine they're also receiving weekly remittances as well.
Okay, and so if, if the, these, oh, sorry, if the Princeton Lakes TAD closes and there's excess money in the TAD, because they've paid the, you know, they're paying off the debt with money they already have, what happens to that excess money?
Yeah, so scrambling to look at the, for the original resolution, I'm fairly-
Did you know where I was going?
I was fairly, I'm fairly certain, any remaining balance is redistributed to the funding partners kind of in an equal piece.
Yeah, so I don't see any reason not to proceed with the resolution that Commissioner Hall and I have put forward, because any money that has gone out that they don't need, we're going to get back. So I, I feel fully committed to the resolution we have up for approval right now.
Commissioner Abdur-Raqman?
Thank you, Chairman. I, I invite any of my colleagues to maybe have a one-on-one with our staff and outside staff as to how the TAD works, because it's, 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 it's not just blighted. There are other areas of enhancement overall. So here again, I'm, I'm trying to be politically correct, which sometimes I'm not, and I'm going to apologize for that. But there are projects in my district, there are projects in Commissioner Hall, Commissioner Barrett, I believe it's some in Commissioner Arrington's, I'm not sure about anybody else's, but those are the ones that I know for sure. And everything isn't necessarily about blight. So, so please check your vocabulary when coming to issues with dealing of areas that have been underserved historically, because you, you come across- Because you come across a certain way that I know in my heart you don't intend to. But because we do have individuals listening, let's make sure we educate ourselves about the TAD and what they do and what's the purpose of them and how they have benefited us and what would be the benefit going on. I support any TAD that closes down and that money that's due back to us coming back. While I also support any TAD that is still open and has proven to us that it's still open and we are still involved with them, us having our involvement. I guess what I don't want to do, I don't want this issue to become political because it really shouldn't, it should not. And so, I would just say, let's, I support this based on the information that I have at hand. And the information that I have at hand warrants me supporting this resolution. But I also support the additional resolution, like I explained to a lot of my constituents, that once a TAD has closed, it's fair for the money that's due back to Fulton County to come back to Fulton County. Thank you.
Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am, I guess I'm still trying to get some more information. My understanding was that the Eastside TAD was the issue for the city and that Princeton Lakes is closing down next year and... I won't say that there is no blight in the Princeton Lakes area, but the Princeton Lakes area is really all brand-new developed. And so, I don't know what else or what other needs they may have for Princeton Lakes. What I, I would love colleagues, I mean, you know, I'm fully supportive of staying in the Eastside TAD and I'm open to staying in Princeton Lakes if there are plans for it, but I don't know that we've been communicating any plans for Princeton Lakes. I would love if we could stay in the Eastside and, you know, instruct staff to come back with a recommendation as to the various other TADS. You know, that way, we, it gives us the flexibility to be included or not be included depending on what the needs are. I have clearly heard the need expressed for the Eastside TAD, no doubt there, but I don't know that there is any need for Camp Creek, but I'm willing to... Yeah, I mean, I could support it as is, but I would prefer if it were, if we gave staff the instructions to come back with a recommendation or to come back with all of the information on all of them. I mean, when did we find out about the closing of the East Point TAD, after the last meeting?
Well, not the closing of the, I'm sorry, the East Point TAD?
Yes.
Prior to that meeting.
Okay, prior, what? No, East Point. He said East Point earlier, that's why, I'm being real clear.
Yeah, the East Point TAD located in the city of East Point, there are two TADS. One of them is the Camp Creek, it's the earliest one. The city took action last year, the city of East Point, to close that TAD. We didn't find out, I think, until the beginning of this year when we started this discovery process with all the TADS as to, "Do you have any bond debt or outstanding obligations?" And they said, "We've closed that TAD." And I think that was their eureka moment of, "I don't think Fulton County knows." And that sent off conversations and that's what we found out from their finance team. That's part of, again, a recommendation around maybe sending a letter to all those who participate in TADS that if any of the funding partners switch around or if they close to just give us a heads-up so that as you guys request this information, we're a little bit more accurate.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, I can support it either way, as is or with the flexibility to come back to us later after we find out, so, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Barrett.
Yeah, I just want to answer your Princeton Lakes question. So, Princeton Lakes is scheduled to close sometime this year and the only reason it remains open is because, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but the only reason it remains open is because it has to legally remain open until all the debt is paid off. Is that correct? And that, I believe, and that will be done this year. So, the only issue is whether or not we continue to pay in. And I think the point I was making earlier is that if we continue to pay in and let it close naturally rather than pulling out prematurely, pardon the expression, we will get our money back. It's only, what, four meetings in, my first dirty joke, I'm proud.
No comment.
All right, oh boy. Commissioner Thorne, well. Commissioner Thorne.
Thank you. So, the Princeton Lakes TAD started in 2002 and the Eastside TAD was 2003, correct?
That's correct.
And the growth, the Eastside TAD has a 295% growth? And then he said on here, because I did meet with them one-on-one to try to understand this better and the intent of why we go into a TAD and if there's, if we should in the future put some kind of cap on how much we contribute. It says the growth in the Princeton Lakes TAD was, is 20,633%.
It's a big number, yeah, yes.
So, we've way exceeded the amount of money that we thought we'd put into the TAD. I think the TAD's what they've done, it's unbelievable, don't get me wrong. They've done great work. They've really helped these areas. And, you know, I've gone and visited some of these areas and, but, we need, we need to find some revenue sources somewhere to fund our upcoming expenses that we have with mental health and public safety. So, I really think we need a way on, you know, do we keep paying into these two TADS if they're well on their way to be healthy, vibrant communities anyway?
Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Samir, I cringe when I hear you talking up there because I hate to see you make yourself look less than and make yourself look like you can't communicate with others because you keep saying that what you don't know, that you don't offer a solution into how you're going to find out what you don't know. And that makes it appear that there's some communication issue, which there shouldn't be because it was very clear at the last meeting by all the people that stood up here from Invest Atlanta that they are willing to communicate. And their response with this long, huge spreadsheet and this, several pages of emails shows their commitment to communicating with us, but I think that perhaps maybe the questions just need to be asked from your side of the house to them because you stood here and I've been making note of all the things that you say that have not been answered and those are simply things that could be answered by a question. And I did so a couple of times just on my phone since I was getting all these text messages related to what people are watching on our FGTV and on the computer. So, it's not very hard to get the answers at all and I would just behoove you to try a little bit harder to do so. Also, with the TADS, the investment in the community is very significant. And it is across in, yes, Commissioner Kadja's area, Commissioner Barrett's area, mine, Commissioner Arrington. It was shown at the last meeting in a presentation on a map which showed all the little dots in the areas where all the projects are currently allocated to be. And this use of funds goes toward addressing crime because when you have blight, you automatically have crime. You have homelessness issues, you have affordable housing issues. It's addressing all of these things. And these are the things that our constituents want to see in their areas. They want us to address crime, affordable housing. And this is a way for the county to invest in that happening without having to do some other investment. I have constituents who ask me often, "Why can't we have a grocery store?" Well, those of you who know about economic development, you know why. But that's exactly what the TADS are doing. They are addressing those issues. So, Commissioner Arrington, you asked about the Princeton Lakes TAD. The answer that I heard, and you can correct me, Mr. Abdouli, if I'm incorrect, at the end of that TAD, we will get our money back. And it's as simple as that. We don't have to ask for it, we don't have to do anything special. We're going to automatically get that money back. And I have a text from Eloisa Clemente that also states that. Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Ellis.
Yeah, I'm not relying necessarily on texts, I'm getting up here on stage. There's a letter February 3rd that we got, right? Responsive to our inquiry to Invest Atlanta. Princeton Lakes TAD, I'm reading right here. Dear Chairman Pitts and Commissioners, this constitute Invest Atlanta's supplemental response to Mr. Samir Abdouli, the Director of Department of Economic Development and Select Fulton's email on January 13, 2023, as previously contained in the PowerPoint presentation shared with you on January 29, 23, the following are the responses to both questions regarding the following tax allocation districts. I'll read specifically the remarks related to Princeton Lakes TAD. Since we've, Eastside TAD, I think we've reached a common consensus on that. Number one, the outstanding debt on Princeton Lakes TAD has been paid in full, period. Two, there are outstanding redevelopment costs in the amount of 4.1 million, which is being held in reserve. Based on the foregoing facts, the city of Atlanta anticipates closing the TAD during 2023. So, they've confirmed us, they have no debt outstanding and that for the redevelopment obligations they have, they have funds on hand to meet them. So, why would it be necessary for us to continue to send our increment their way when all the obligations have been met? You know, when a TAD, a TAD doesn't necessarily have to close for us to stop paying an increment. When they've reached their, the necessary conclusion, if it happens beforehand, you know, you stop paying your increment, you move on, you close it, right? I mean, they've said to us that, you know, they've got the funds on hand to do what they need to do. So, why are we going to continue to drop money into something that's not needed? That's, to borrow a word from Commissioner Arrington, preposterous. So, you know, and I'm not doing that as much emphasis because I don't know if I have as much energy right now, Commissioner Arrington. But, you know, so, I mean, look, personally, I mean, if we need to go back and ask the question again and confirm it and have them confirm it a different way, maybe it's a good thing to do versus just sort of arbitrarily deciding, "Hey, let's just go drop money in there and wait another 12, 15 months and then kind of get it out." I don't know, that's not the way I do my own personal finances and I don't think that's the way our taxpayers would expect us to do our finances either. To go stick some government funds over in escrow with somebody else and wait for them when they've already told us they don't need them. Stupid. Sorry, different word. So, I mean, I mean, I'll go again, I'll offer a substitute motion, just to put it on the floor, that we instruct our manager to send a note, confirm this on the Princeton Lakes and if we get that confirmation back, you know, we stop paying our increment into the Princeton Lakes TAD and that we, you know, thank them for the supplemental information they provided us on the Eastside TAD and that we will continue, will continue our participation in it. That's my motion.
All right, you have a substitute motion on the floor by Commissioner Ellis, I'll second that motion. All right, let's vote on the substitute motion.
And the vote is open on the substitute. And the motion passed, four yeas, three nays.
Okay. You still want to be heard? Commissioner Hall, you still want to be heard? Okay. Continue.
Bottom of page 16, 23, 0136, request approval of a resolution to abolish certain boards, commissions, task force, committees and councils due to their failure to conduct meetings within the past 24 months contingent upon verification by county staff and for other purposes. Sponsored by Vice Chair Ellis.
Vice Chair.
Yes, Commissioners, background, I think, or in one of the earlier meetings we had, may have been the first meeting of the year, we had some discussion about sort of the volume of different boards and task forces that we, and committees and authorities and other sundry names, however they might be named, councils, et cetera. And that notation that several of them were inactive. And these were largely entities of task forces and subcommittees and this sort of stuff at different points in time. You know, this body had sort of authorized for some sort of point-in-time purpose, but, you know, a number of these were no longer sort of functional, which added to sort of this confusion and so forth, you know, for our citizens and also some complications for our clerk. So, I'd ask to have the clerk identify those particular entities which had been inactive but hadn't met for a period of two years and which, you know, we had the authority to effectively close down. It wasn't some sort of entity that was created by the state or, you know, some other body that we needed to consult with. And they had identified 19 entities which are noted in Exhibit A on this resolution and this would just basically just dissolve or abolish these particular entities. And that's sort of the sole purpose of this particular resolution. And it was done with consult from the clerk's office in terms of, they were the ones that came up with the list and then in consult with the county attorney's office in terms of clarifying that that responsibility rested with us to particularly close that matter. Is that a fair statement, Madam Clerk and County Attorney?
No.
Okay.
Yes, that is our understanding.
All right, Commissioner Arrington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that we definitely need to look at this, look at this list and there may be some that I am, that not only need to be closed. I guess I fundamentally have a problem with closing the commission because they haven't met. I want to know what are their goals and why were they established? And I want to make my decision on whether they should go forward or not based on those goals. I don't know if it is as a failure of the committee or the task force that they haven't met in 12 or 24 months or our failure to properly populate these boards and commissions. And so, I certainly agree, Vice Chair Ellis. A lot of these need to go, Wolf Creek Advisory Committee, we're selling that, all right? There's no reason for that to still be around. But there are others that probably have good purpose in that some of us, or at least I or others, may not have been aware of and did not appoint anyone to. So, I support this in theory, but I don't know that I'm ready to just get rid of all night. Like, I don't know if I'm ready to get rid of the Fulton County Reentry Task Force just because they haven't met. They might need to be repopulated, you know, but certainly there are some on here that could very likely... that could very likely, you know, that could be getting the Atlanta Streetcar Advisory Board. You know, I don't know that we have anything to do with that. And I think the City of Atlanta sold Streetcar to MARTA, you know. So, you know, I agree that some of these need to go away. But I don't know that it's the time factor that is the determining factor for me as to why they need to go away. For me, it's more what is their purpose? And should we still have a committee for that purpose? And is it, you know, because again, I don't know if it's the committee's failure or more our failure to appoint people. Thank you.
Commissioner Thorne.
As a new commissioner, you know, I haven't reappoint or appoint, make appointments enough as it is. So it'd be great if we could clear out some. But maybe instead of closing them, we can maybe make them, deem them inactive and clear out all the members that are on that board. And in the event we need to reactivate them, the board is there and it could be reactivated. And at that point, we make appointments for the board at that point. I don't know if that's possible. So could I make a substitute motion to make them all inactive and clear all members of the boards?
You referring to the 19 or 20 that's on that list, recommended list? You can. Is that your motion?
I make that motion.
All right, is there a second? Is there a second? All right, motion dies to lack of a second.
I thought I seconded. Didn't I second?
All right, you still have the floor.
Oh, I thought I seconded.
No, you made the motion, the substitute motion, but no one seconded.
Oh, okay, I got it. Got it, no, I'm good.
All right, Commissioner Barrett.
I appreciate what you're saying, Commissioner Thorne. And I have a similar idea, except I think it would kind of hold with going ahead and passing this, which is just that two years is a long time to not have met. And, you know, I think it's fair to close them down. That said, I think it's perfectly reasonable for us to review them. And if there are ones that we feel like we needed a new board or task force to deal with that issue or a similar issue, that we create a new one. Maybe with different set of rules and with different communication requirements and meeting requirements and things of that nature. And then just go ahead and appoint new folks to it and start fresh. And there's nothing that would preclude us from doing that. So I don't have any problem with this as it stands.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Ellis. All right, the motion on the floor is to approve by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open.
Madam Clerk.
And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay.
All right, continue.
On page 1723-0066, Fulton, Fulton Decap Hospital Authority, Commissioner Thorne has nominated Bernie Tokars for a district reappointment to a term ending December 31, 2026.
Okay, I'd ask that this be held, pulled off of the consent agenda at the last meeting with, to give you time to look at the state law that was passed specifically for this board. If you had a chance to.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we've researched it. And the term limit is three consecutive terms or 12 years. And in this instance, I believe Mr. Tokars is under that term limit amount.
Okay, so that was the law that was passed at the state level specifically for this board. And I can count T. Leves as good as anybody. He proclaimed to me in the loud voice that he has six votes in his back pocket, so my vote won't matter. Let's vote. What game? I didn't say that. No, no, no. Let's vote. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk. We got a problem with the equipment. All right, those in favor say aye. So on the appointment of Mr. Tokars, those in favor, raise your right hand. Mr. Tokars, one, two. All right, Thorne, Abdullahu Rockman, Barrett, Hall, Ellis, and Arrington. Voting yes, Pitts voting no. Continue.
And the motion passes, six yeas, one nay.
Now, the state law, because of the confusion, but you remember when there was one person that I removed who'd been on there 14 years and the state got involved and reduced it to no one can serve on that board for more than 12 years. Right? Is that right, Madam County Attorney?
That's correct, 12 years or three consecutive terms.
Three or three consecutive terms. Okay, continue.
23-0137, Board of Ethics, the Gate City Bar Association has nominated DeCarra Satcher for a full board reappointment to a term ending February 12, 2026.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Arrington.
Mr. Chair, I must object. I tried to handle this quietly, but no one seemed to want to handle it that way. I have to object to any and all of these board members. This board has not followed any of its policies. They have done numerous things outside of their authority and in violation of their own policies, rules, and procedures, including filing a lawsuit against me and one of my legal clients who is not a Fulton County employee. So I have filed a motion in both pending matters before them to have them disqualified, to have them recused, and to have those matters dismissed for their complete and utter lack of following their own rules. So they can't hear anything against me. Y'all can keep them if you want to. But anytime something's filed on me, I'm automatically filing a motion to disqualify them because you cannot judge someone and sue them at the same time. Thank you.
Okay, now the, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Arrington. Now, the issue before us is the appointment, rather, the approval of the recommendation of the Gate City Bar Association of Mr. Satcher to the Board of Ethics. That's what's before us. All right, you have a motion to approve by Commissioner.
I think it's a female, Mr. Chair, I could be wrong.
Might be a female. All right, motion to approve by, just a minute. Motion to approve by Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hall, you have the floor.
Okay, so Commissioner Arrington, I'm sorry. I'm trying to understand what the appointment of this person has to do with the board that has been actively doing these things. And do we have, does the county attorney have information on what Commissioner Arrington is talking about? Because I'm not completely privy to all of that information.
I'm glad you asked that, Commissioner Hall. This person is currently on the board and is currently the president of the board, the chair of the board, responsible for making sure that they follow the requirements as outlined in the enabling legislation.
Oh.
This is a reappointment of someone that does not follow the rules.
Oh. Madam County Attorney?
I can share with the board that in the conduct of the recent cases before the Board of Ethics, my office has also noticed irregularities in the procedural rules and the way that they have conducted notice. I also have concerns about the filing of a lawsuit by an entity that does not have authority to file. So there are some questions that I would have as well.
Oh, we need to address that. I withdraw my motion. Please withdraw my motion.
Your motion, you want to withdraw your motion?
Withdraw my second, yes.
All right, she's withdrawn her second. I'll second the motion. Motion to approve by Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman. I'll second that motion. Now, how do I, on the floor here, second?
Yeah, because they're scheduled to meet tomorrow.
Oh, she did it, that's why I did it.
Okay. Now, again, no disrespect intended for Commissioner Arrington's statement. But what's before us now, just a minute, just a minute. What's before us now is the approval of the recommended person from the Gate City Bar Association. That's the only thing that's before us.
No, it's not. The county attorney just spoke.
My ruling is that's what's before us. That's the issue that we're voting on.
Your ruling doesn't go overrule what she said.
Commissioner Ellis, you have the floor, Vice Chair.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I mean, irrespective of the term expiring on 2/12, that's, you know, that's not our problem, that it just got to us today. You know, I'm going to offer a substitute motion to hold until, you know, all of us would have an interest have an opportunity to hear from our county attorneys and talk to her specifically about some of the concerns she expressed. I did sit in on one of their sessions as well. And I'm not an attorney like our county attorney or Commissioner Arrington, but did observe some things that just struck me as maybe a little bit odd. And I do think it's probably worth us all at least taking a turn at this and understanding. I think it's a functional body that needs to be there. I think we've seen how it can get dysfunctional and, you know, in a neighboring county and some of the unnecessary stuff that took place there. And I think, you know, there might be an opportunity for us to just pause, have a good conversation around it, communicate some of those concerns back to that body and get this on track so that, you know, we have something that's functioning the way it should be. So I'd, you know, I'd respectfully request that we hold this.
All right, you have a substitute motion on the floor to hold, properly moved and seconded. Commissioner Arrington, you want to be heard again?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. They have created an irreconcilable conflict. The only option that they have is that they all have to resign. That's the only option they have. That's the only option they have. They all have to resign. They created this conflict by filing a lawsuit and by not following the procedures. Y'all can keep them if you want to, but I can guarantee you that I will file a motion to have them disqualified anytime something comes up before them. Any member that is currently on that board, if any member, even just one of them remains, I will move to have the whole board disqualified. They must resign today.
Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman.
County Attorney, and I really don't have a dog in this fight, but I'm trying to do the duty as an elected official what's been put before me. So I'm going to play devil's advocate. And so if you can answer it, fine. If you can't, I'll understand. If we do not reappoint this person, will the Ethics Board still be able to operate as a Ethics Board? Does this balance not? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a clarification of what our powers are here and what our powers are not as a body. Given, given all the commentary about anything that they've done is questionable if they're operating or not operating. I'm not even asking about that. That could be true. But if we do not reappoint this appointee, does that keep them from functioning as an Ethics Board?
We have to pull that specific, the rules for that specific body. But it's my understanding that an unfilled seat, the previous person could continue to serve in that capacity. And even if that turns out not to be the case, that is one individual on the entire board. So it would not shut down the operations of the board simply because that one person is not present.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if they have a quorum, they can still lead.
Or a quorum, yeah.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to hold. Let's vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to hold. And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay.
Next item.
On page 1823-0138, South Fulton Community Improvement District Board, Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman has nominated Reverend Tanji Clark to replace Jim Sams for a full board appointment.
All right, motion by Commissioner Hall is to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman. Commissioner Arrington.
Okay, I'm going to do a motion to hold on this. Number one, Madam Clerk, I do not understand how Khan and Abdullahu Rockman can be separate. Typically, the commissioner who has appointed someone, so when my appointments came up, they were Edward slash Arrington. So I would expect to see this as Khan slash Abdullahu Rockman because they're, came from the same district and the same seat. I now have a district. I now have the district that is 95% South Fulton. 95%, my district is 95% South Fulton. So there is no way that somebody can have two appointments, that one district seat can have two appointments for a district that I have 95% of. Motion to hold.
Okay, I think this is, the confusion here has probably come about as a result of redistricting and renumbering of the district. So maybe we need to sort this out. Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman.
I have no problem with holding it. It's not that big of a deal.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to hold. Motion to hold by Commissioner Arrington, seconded by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote, please, on the motion to hold.
And the vote is open on the motion to hold. And the motion passes unanimously.
Continue.
Commissioners, Discussion Items 23-0097, Discussion of An ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2 of the Fulton County Code of Ordinances to modify Code Section 2-261 to require the county manager to present the budget request for the next fiscal year to the Board of Commissioners no later than 60 days before the millish rate is set and for other purposes. Sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
I would just do another motion to hold. Unfortunately, I'm going to have to leave, so I don't have time to do the discussion on this. But happy to talk with anyone about it between now and the next meeting to, you know, for comments, criticisms, questions, anything of the like.
All right, without objection, we hold. Continue, Madam Clerk.
23-0139, Discussion, Abolishment of Certain Boards, Authorities, Committees, and Task Forces. Sponsored by Chairman Pitts.
All right, this was taken care of in the previous legislation by Ellis. And I had sent each of you a list of recommended boards, commissions, et cetera, to be abolished. So that list should have been attached to, it's the same thing. All right, so, all right, continue.
Back to the consent agenda on page 5. Item pool for separate consideration by Chairman Pitts. 23-0107, Development Authority of Fulton County, Commissioner Abdullahu Rockman has nominated Kwanzaa Hall to replace Joanne Potts for an unexpired district appointment to a term ending May 31, 2025.
Okay, my question has been answered, so I'll second it. Is that, is that right? All right, let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, five yeas, zero nays.
Madam Clerk.
No further items.
No further items to come before us today. We adjourned. Thank you very much.